Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aliria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April 11th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Williams has our Dog of the Week.
We have a happy little guy here, American Bull Dog. I don't know if he's looking for somewhere to go or somewhere to pee. He's going to be up for adoption Saturday at 3 o'clock here. See? That's it, boy. Alright, just like my dog, he'll do anything for a treat. But, Jack, how many dogs do we have at the kennel?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three dogs, so come down, see, take a look. If you want to adopt this great dog, Saturday at 3 o'clock, cage 16?
Yes.
And again, just a puppy, fun-loving dog. Been playing with him earlier today and just a good family member to have, so please consider supporting our dog kennel.
Thank you. We've actually asked everyone to come out and adopt dogs over the past week because we were so full and luckily, people listened and did come down and took about 10 or 12 dogs out of the dog pound this past week, so thank you for that.
11:15 we'll have a presentation under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Paying Services Bills.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Transfers?
Can we hold, actually, hold appropriations, transfers until after our executive session today, if we have one? I didn't have a chance to look at it because it wasn't available yesterday. I was going to do it after. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
You want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, can I withdraw my motion for, yeah, for three?
Mr. Williams, why don't you draw your second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Requisitions?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Miskowski, Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personal actions as indicated on the Servicy for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kocowski. I do have a potential new hire in solid waste that I wish to discuss with the Board. Also, an update on continuing labor discussions. There's two contracts going on, one with the steelworkers, one with the auto workers. And also, nope, don't have any hires at Goldnakers today, so no hires there. Both of those topics are allowable under the Sunshine Law for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into executive session and have those talks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approving of the reading of the same county Commissioners' meeting minutes of April 4, 2012.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Authorized $1,000 payment to each funeral home for indigent veterans in accordance with the Ohio Realized Code 5901. One to Reickland Roberts, Aliria for Joseph Smanos and Avon. Boyer and Kuhl Home for funerals, Lorraine for Johnny Pine and Lorraine. And Dickin Funeral Homes, Aliria for Stanley Williams, Aliria.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Under Community Development Release Funds to Baristers of Ohio LLC, Cleveland, to satisfy capital contribution obligations of the agreement with Lorraine County Elderly House Incorporated to acquire 314 South Pleasant Overland in accordance with Neighborhood Stabilization Programs Guidelines. Said purchase in the amount not to exceed $37,000 and all closing costs determined upon receipt of preliminary HUD One Form to be paid from contract services account.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
For these two, we have another one coming up on number 13. It didn't say what we were doing with these properties once we acquired them, Mr. Cortez, or?
Well, Don's here, but as I remember last week, I thought we were going that way when I spoke on them. We're working with the Housing Authority to consolidate a couple lots and then do some replacement housing, and then we did the sewers over there with the CDBG funds. If I'm remembering correctly, it was six lots going to be condensed down to four lots, and then Metro Housing is going to provide the administration because there's a time period that they have to stay with moderate to low income. The problem with that program is the record-keeping and the length of how long you've got to do all that, it really exceeds the resources they've given you to provide for this type of service. But I'm pretty confident that Metro Housing, as our partner, will be able to accomplish that.
But I'm not really in favor of putting up additional housing. I think we should leave the property vacant until we decide later on what to do with that property. Is there a way that we can hold off on building something on that land?
This was the first round submitted for the NSP funds, and this was the agenda issues that were sent to them for approval to do these type of projects. I don't believe that this fought down that we're able to back up and resubmit our plans and budgets to them, but Don can speak better than I can right now.
Well, I know a lot of the requirements require so much of the rebuild, also you can't just do all of that.
I'd like to take more of the rebuild money and put it towards repairs on houses. That way, people that are trying to sell their house are not competing with houses, brand-new houses that we're building, and the whole supply and demand issue that I talked about last time we brought this up.
These are funds that came to the county through the state back in 2008, and we're implementing the plan that was approved previously by the Commissioners and the State of Ohio. The reason that you keep seeing this coming before you is that because of inability to get a 501(c)(3) established in an appropriate level of time, the state thought it best that the county go forward and actually implement the program on behalf of LMHA and their nonprofits while they're still waiting for the 501(c)(3). We really don't have the flexibility at this point in time to be able to make those changes, and this is pursuant to a development contract that we have entered into with both LMHA through their Lorraine County Elderly Housing Corp., as well as with the State of Ohio. We need to wrap this up by December 31st of this year, which provides us with very little time to even be able to have those discussions. Now, there is another pot of funds where we are doing those type of things with NSP3 funds, and we're concentrating on demolition, both in Sheffield Lake and Sheffield Township from the county perspective, along with partnering with the City of Lorraine and City of Aliria. And there, we were able to obtain a waiver to put about 50% of the money towards demolition and provide some money for land banking to acquire parcels where we're not required to redevelop them for a period of up to 10 years.
Good, okay. Well, I'll vote in favor of this, but going forward, I just want you to keep in mind that I'm not in favor of rebuilding on the properties that we acquire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Authorized payments to lawyers, title, insurance company, Aliria on behalf of Lorraine County Elderly House Incorporated in accordance with Neighborhood House Stabilization Program Guidelines. Said purchases for 3641 Albany Avenue Sheffield Township in the amount not to exceed $19,000 and all closing costs and sellers' costs determined upon receipt of preliminary HUD One Form to be paid from contract services account.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Except recommendation to Action Center Review Council and approve report which includes the review of 17 tax abatements and recommendation to continue 16, one for one year, and acknowledge expiration of one.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Under the engineer advertised for bids for replacing Overland Road Bridge 0044 in City of Overland and New Rush Township. Notice to be in the Journal on April 13th and 20th and open at 2:00 PM on May 1st. Estimate cost is $354,000. Funding will be through OPWC grant covering 74%, with balance of 26% being split between County Engineer and City of Overland.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Authorized engineer to execute contract being prepared by ODOT between Heritage Land Services and County to provide right-of-way appraisal review services on Griswold Road Project. The amount of services is $16,100 to be paid from the engineer servicing's account, but will approach TID for reimbursement.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Under the prosecutor authorized continuation of a grant with Office of Criminal Justice for Victim/Witness Program, effective retroactive to January 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2012. Authorized George I. Corey, Chief of Staff, to execute unnecessary documents, $40,000 to pay salary and fringe benefits for one full-time victim advocate, and $13,333 in in-kind match provided by supervisory and other salaries paid through prosecutor's budget and indirect cost provided by County.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kaylo?
Aye.
Would you like to do the presentation?
Yes.
Mr. Rangel, Mayor Rittenhour?
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning. I'll state my name, Chase Rittenhour, 2515 Garfield Boulevard, City of Lorraine, and here to talk about the St. Joe's Community Center. On Monday, this, pretty close to this very same presentation, was given to Lorraine City Council, and, you know, we're certainly here because, I mean, this center's been an ongoing issue for some time now. At the very beginning of my term, early on, a letter surfaced regarding St. Joe's from ORA, which detailed a lot of the concerns and the challenges with respect to the facility. And since that letter, a lot of the challenges within the letter were challenges that certainly were well-known and well-documented that needed to be worked through, and we've been working with the stakeholders, the many stakeholders, with respect to this project to develop a comprehensive plan, and that's why we're here today. This comprehensive plan has included discussions with the various stakeholders, including a trip to Columbus to meet with the Department of Development, and this trip included members of the county and included members of the city. ORA, Matt Slater from Valor Home, the project that I think is going to be a huge asset to St. Joe's, was also present. Members of our state delegation, State Representative Ramos, State Representative Lundey, State Senator Manning, she was also at the table with us. And what we're looking at today is not a formalized agreement, it's a proposal. It's a proposal contingent on a number of things, certainly Lorraine City Council support, contingent on the Board of Commissioners' support, and really would be contingent upon the State Department of Development accepting the proposal put forth. It's certainly an ongoing matter, and we're trying to be as proactive as we can in communication, but also being cognizant of the negotiation that has to have, that had to go on with respect to looking at all the financials of this project. From a financial standpoint, the guarantee on the loan with the city and the county, we each have $675,000 guarantee on the loan, and the idea that if the door's closed tomorrow, the city and the county can walk away without, you know, any financial implications, it's simply not true. And I think the presentation's going to illustrate not only the $675,000 loan guarantee for each the city and the county, but it's also going to illustrate the additional financial implications, as well as, I would argue, the social implications, and I think the presentation does a good job at discussing that. So what we're discussing today, in our eyes, not only looks to keep St. Joe's Community Center operational in the short term and a plan for the long term, it goes further than that. Since taking office, I have been an advocate and somebody who said we need a long-term plan that has an end line in place for at least the city's guarantee, the city's commitment, financial commitment in this project. I certainly can't speak for the Commissioners, but what we have put together provides for a 36 to 48-month end line with respect to the financial obligation. And, you know, what we want, I think what we all want in a perfect world, is a center that's devoid of continuous financing that has had to go on in these past years. And what you're going to see today is a pro forma that's presented by ORA that, in my mind, is conservative in nature, it's conservative with respect to growth, but it also includes what's necessary for the center in the future, and that's an investment in capital for the maintenance of the building. So, the proposal's two-pronged, it's operational, it focuses on the operations, but it also comes with a necessary end line in the process, which I wanted to see in terms of an overall plan. So with those introductory remarks, if it's to the pleasure of the Board, I'd like to turn it over to ORA for the...
Actually, I have one question for you. The meeting down in Columbus, that was a lot of officials down there. What was the goal of that meeting?
The goal of the meeting was, rather than, you know, the state is involved in this, but rather than email the state and have phone conversations, we wanted to bring people to the table to present our story to the state in terms of what the center is, and actually have a face-to-face conversation. And the state, I think, actually really appreciated that, because, you know, to have all the officials around the table who took the time out of their schedules to be there, I think sent a message to the state that, going forward, we need to have a plan and we need to try to make this work.
I'm a little offended by it because I sent out numerous emails asking to be part of that meeting coming up, and no one responded.
Well, Tom, you've been against the project since you've been here.
I haven't been against, I haven't been against the project.
We have talked about moving the VA, relocating, and we've been here trying to keep it going after, prior to your being in the administration.
It's a public meeting and you kept...
It wasn't a public meeting.
Okay, you had a meeting, a discussion.
Correct.
Something seems a little fishy with this, but go ahead with your presentation. I think it was wrong on your part, on part of you, and Ted, I know you've been having other meetings behind this, but, and for the record, I'm not against the President, against St. Joe's. I just want to make sure that we have a good solution that's going to use taxpayer money wisely. And I think it was wrong to go down there and have basically state reps, a state senator, and every other one else there, and not to even respond to an email that I sent out numerous times, so. Chairwoman, Mr. Mayor.
Greg Kip, Ohio Realty Advisors, 9676 East Northwood Drive, Olmsted Falls, Ohio. Microphone's a little short for me here.
Yeah. I'm not used to tall people.
Okay, what I'd like to do today, I appreciate the opportunity to present this plan, is, you know, it's ORA's obligation, I feel, to present, you know, the facts, a very one-sided presentation, or, I'm sorry, not a one-sided presentation, right down the middle, showing basically where we are financially, where we are with our tenants in the building, where we are with our prospects, and, you know, just give you guys the, that would be great. Thank you. Give you guys the opportunity to understand this property maybe a little bit more than you do today. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear it.
Do not hear me?
Why don't you use the podium mic there? Hang on a minute.
Check. Check. Any better in the back?
I can do this.
I'm going to get it here, it just takes a second for it to go up.
Okay, we'll get started here. Picture of the facility, I think we're all familiar with that. In 2010, this is just a little history here, in 2010, the city and county, along with the state, made a decision to keep the center open and entered into a development agreement between the City of Lorraine, South Shore, the Department of Development, the county, Mercy Health Partners, and Industrial Realty Group, IRG. In September of 2010, Ohio Realty Advisors was retained by the South Shore Board and became the manager on the property. We've been involved ever since, and in January of 2012, we accepted the donation agreement from the Mercy Hospital. This slide shows the overview of the property. The, more of the orangish-yellow color is the main hospital area, the original property that we started managing in September of 2010. The brighter yellow represents the property that was, that came over with the Mercy donation, and that includes the occupational health, health and dentistry facilities, what we refer to as Building G, and then the Reedy Scanlon property to the bottom of the slide there, and then there's the old ambulat, or some people refer to as the old gas station on the west. This slide shows the first floor, which is the main floor of the hospital, and it's the majority of our tenants in the building. And, you know, the purpose of this slide is really to show how well-occupied we are on the first floor, on the main floor of the facility. You can see, you know, everybody can go through the color code there and understand the tenants. Obviously, the VA being one of our largest tenants, and LCC also being a large tenant and with recent expansions, and hopeful that they'll continue to expand this year. On the far-right side of the slide, the purple color, that is the D-building, and that is scheduled for demolition with the CORF grants. Financially, this is the 2011 actual finances, finance report on a cash basis. We keep all of our books in our world on a cash basis, and you can see there where we have the revenues of $689, our expenses with a negative NOI, net income of $183. And in our world in real estate, the NOI is really our biggest indicator. There's capital, there's things that come along that are up and down, but we really strive for the consistency in the cash flow and the NOI. So at negative $183, we had capital, legal, other expenses of $319, grants and loans of $414, and other receipts included a, part of the donation agreement was a one-time payment from Mercy of $30,000. Then, a profit and loss of negative $57,000 for 2011. Now, that is deceiving because it is on a cash basis, you have to factor in that we also had $300,000 worth of payables at the end of the year. So our real, our true net loss for 2011 would have been $359, roughly. But in 2012, we have a projection of revenue of $913, and expenses are also up. The major reason for the increased expenses and increased revenue is the addition of the Mercy Hospital property. There's additional revenue from occupational health and health and dentistry, and also expenses that go along with that property. But we also have increased revenues factored in for the Valor Homes condo fee that they would pay, and slight bumps in some of the rents that are in the property. So there's other factors in there, but those are the major differences between 11 and 12 revenue. We did not budget any additional leasing in 2012. It's our practice to not budget new leasing unless we have an inked contract with a tenant. So you're seeing actual budget as if we wouldn't lease another square foot of property this year. So a net income of $132, negative $132. We've got capital projected at $212,000, which is all, aside from a small amount of legal bills, that $200,000 is all maintenance, deferred maintenance, capital items for, mostly associated with the HVAC system in the building. We're showing a zero in the grants, loans, although, you know, our presentation to the state would factor that in. We're trying to show the profit and loss as if there wasn't anything, if we were sitting there alone. And you can follow that down to a negative $342,000 deficit projected for 2012. Any questions on that slide before I move on? You can certainly come back to it if we need to. So this slide is, there's a lot of narrative on here that kind of explains where we've come from. In 2010, we had a net operating income of $290,000, $211,000, I just showed you, $183,000, and in 2012, a negative $132,000 net operating income. So the slide shows that there's a trend downward, and then explained what I already explained on the last slide relative to the revenue on the last slide. The payables, this was as of the end of the year, showing that, I mentioned earlier, we had $300,000 in payables. This explains some of the bigger players that are, that are more partners with us at this point, that have significant money owed to them. Our architectural firm, $28,000, and you can read through the list. Our law firm has been very tolerant of our not being able to pay them $42,000. And Ohio Edison, obviously, is the largest on there, and they're, that number's changing because we're constantly paying them what we can, but it's still just over $100,000 that we owe them.
Ohio Edison, is that South Shore's debt, or is that the City of Lorraine's?
It's actually, the electric bill is still in the city's name. They most likely would not tolerate South Shore if the bill was, were to be put into South Shore's name, they would most likely not tolerate the terms that were, that we've been able to negotiate by having the city with us on that.
What was the balance when you took it over, though? Was the electric bill, was it at zero when you took it?
Well, when we took it over, we also had a $250,000 loan that came over from the city to help us pay expenses, and at the time that we took over the property in September, I believe we owed them about six months' worth of electric.
What was the law firm, what were their services for?
The majority of those services were involved with paying for the condo documents to set up our condominium plan that we have at the building. We've actually condoed each floor of the building. It was necessary to be able to sell the fifth floor to the Valor Home, but we, when we put together the condo plan, we did it for the entire property, not just their floor, so that it was a one-time expense, and in the future, we are able, we'll be able to sell off floors or suites without having to redo that legal work. Do you want to speak, Doug?
Yeah. Part of the reason that the, this electric bill's still in the city's name is, this goes back to when the city sort of took over the ongoing management as there was no director. So we ended up putting a number of these bills in the city's name, just so those bills would come to the city and we could make sure that those were being paid. As we did work with ORA, we then began to transition some of those bills over, from the city, over to South Shore. However, because of the balance, we just didn't have enough funds. We've been working with a deficit this entire time, have been trying to keep up, but what we've done is, we've tried to keep it somewhat current. As we do some more of these deals, specifically with Valor Home, we should be, we should be brought current, and we should be able to then move that back over to South Shore's name.
Thank you. This slide is the loans on the property. We have a $1.3 million, $1.35 million loan with the state guaranteed by the county and the city for $675 each, and that payback of that state loan does not begin until there's profitability at South Shore, and I believe it's 10% of the profit for any given month that would be paid back towards that loan. So we're not making payments on that loan as of now. And as a part of the development agreement, there was a $250,000 loan from the city to help support the operating shortfalls, and that loan was scheduled to begin payment back on April 1 of 2012, and we are, we are working on that with the city as well.
Question, who's the debt actually owned by? The $1.35 million?
The state.
It's owned by the state, it's owed to the state, but who is it, who's responsible for it?
Doug, do you know?
I know we're guaranteeing...
The South Shore is, but we were like the second co-signer.
Yeah, the, actually, South Shore is the borrower, however, the state, oh, sorry, the city and county each guaranteed a portion of that, as well as the state. As part of the amendment that went with this development agreement, the state forgave their... forgave their guaranteed portion. What was left was the half of the original debt that is jointly guaranteed by the county and the city.
I know a lot of people don't know, who, who actually makes up South Shore? Who is South Shore?
It's a, it's a nonprofit board of, we have nine board members today.
Okay.
Five of which are appointed by IRG, two city.
Three city.
Three city, one county. That's it, that's it.
So five are appointed by IRG?
Correct.
Okay, and what is IRG?
Industry Realty Group. And they were asked, it's a, it's a local, I'm sorry, a national investment company.
Right.
They're one of our clients. They're actually, they, they're actually the company that hired us to.
That's a private company, correct?
Be South Shore, correct.
Is the state having any issue with them being considered, this being a charitable organization or nonprofit organization?
Well, there's, they're board members. The IRG folks are board members.
Right, you have five of them, so that would be the majority.
Correct.
Is there any issues with that, with them being a nonprofit?
I don't believe so.
There's no state taxes owed, property tax or anything?
Property taxes? There are, there are no property taxes currently owed today. However, there was a ruling on the real estate tax issue, which we are currently reviewing with South Shore's attorney.
What was the ruling?
The ruling is, is that it should be a taxable, a taxable property because there is a landlord-tenant relationship, even though that the landlord is nonprofit and all of the tenants are nonprofits. We are currently trying to work through that with the state as well, with the Department of Taxation.
And schools on board to keep it status quo with not being, receiving tax dollars?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
The schools, the Lorain City Schools. If they would, if this were to become a property tax, they would get some funding?
Correct.
Are they on board with?
But it's also funding that they've never received in the past, because this property has been non-taxed.
Okay.
And, and by the way, the IRG involvement and the five board members has nothing to do with the state ruling on the real estate taxes.
Okay.
It's simply a landlord-tenant relationship is, is considered to be taxable income regardless of the, whether or not it's a nonprofit or a for-profit company.
Yeah, I thought you actually had to make a profit on that, though, for, in order for it to be considered, to lose your nonprofit status, though.
Well, no, we, even as a nonprofit, the state is ruling that it's still.
Okay.
It's still required to pay taxes.
All right.
To pay property taxes. Because it's a landlord, and a landlord by definition, according to the state, landlord by definition has to pay real estate taxes. I think it, you know, that's been something that's been brought up, and I think what's important to understand is, we're talking about potentially $30,000, maybe $40,000 a year if we were to be taxed for the real estate taxes. Because of the value of the property, what is now carried on the books, state books of like $6 million, we would challenge that. There's no way it's worth $6 million. And, you know, the like, the likely value of the property would be closer to $1,003, which is what the loan is on the building, which, you know, if you, if you math that out, it's roughly $35,000 a year in taxes.
So you believe it's valued at $1,003, okay.
On, on the high side, if anybody wants to buy it, we, we are for sale. The, okay, so that, that gets you through that slide on the city loan, well. Grants that have been on the, the property are the HUD EDI grant, 166, that we received. And that was actually money that Ohio Realty was involved with at the beginning in 2010. We put that to good use with expanding Lorain County Community College and overhauling their space. And we also used that money towards the Little Lighthouse project that we did this past year. We had a grant for $253,000 for HHS that was used for mechanical deferred maintenance to the occupied areas, and that was money that we put to use right away. There were some emergency needs to keep the building functioning that we put together right away. And then we have energy efficiency money that is, says 480, but it, we're actually around $200,000 of energy efficiency money. That work is out to bid, and we're looking forward to kicking that project off here in the next month. That will help us reduce our, our operating costs further. The, the CORF grant, which has been awarded for $1,006, Mercy Hospitals is donating the $360,000 match. We have 120,000 of that match already in a, in an account, ready to go, and we're hoping that that demolition will begin yet this year, this summer hopefully. And we really believe that that's going to have a, a great impact on the, our momentum from both leasing and just from a, from a perspective of this, the community actually seeing that happen. It's been something that's been talked about for a long time, and we're excited to, to kick that off. The, the demolition, as I, I mentioned earlier, is primarily the D building, which is the building that fronts Broadway, the Reedy Scanlon building across the street, and we are not demo, demoing the parking garage at this time.
You're not going to demo it?
No, the parking garage is needed for the necessary parking for the facility.
Who owns that?
South Shore, it came as part of the donation agreement from Mercy. So South Shore Community Development owns the parking garage.
They own the par, wasn't that, was it under a 50-year lease for like a dollar from Mercy at one time?
It's not what, parking garage, I thought you brought that up last week, our executive.
No, IRG during negotiations, you might be familiar with the old, IRG wasn't.
The parking garage originally with South Shore Community Development Corporation was under a 50-year lease from Mercy, and obviously, if South Shore wasn't able to carry out that lease, then it reverted back to Mercy, and it had a, a guaranteed 50-year renewable for what, you know, was perceived at the time to be perpetuity. So there, so it was based almost for 100 years if they exercised the renewal. But it was, it was, I think it was a dollar a year, some minor fee just to have consideration in the deal.
So this next slide gets into what it would take to close the facility. And obviously, we have the, the tenants that are in the building, the biggest being the VA Hospital.
Let me stop you there real quick, Greg. What's the VA Hospital's investment in that facility between their original build-out and their expansion?
I think their original, their original build-out and, and expansion was $7 million that they, they invested into that facility.
And didn't they just do an upgrade now in, in the past two years and expand?
I think they had to expand right before we took over. I'm not familiar with the dollars.
Yeah, they could only expand, no more than 10% of their existing space, so I think that's what they did. They took about another 2,000 square feet.
Didn't the VA receive rent credits, though, for some of that build-out?
That predates me, so I'm not exactly sure which, if, if they is, but I have heard that they did get some credits toward that.
Yeah, I think they, they got rent credits, and I think that even the lease they're currently under may still provide for rent credits to cover some of that build-out cost. It's been a while since I looked at that, but there were some rent credits.
I believe they are paying the, the full amount of what they are, are supposed to under the lease.
They used to be the chairman of the board for that South Shore at one time, correct?
In a past life.
It was a past life, you know, that was a different Titanic, so, but yes, there, there were some things we did over there for a few years.
How long is the VA lease?
I think it's up in 2017.
November 30th of, of 2019.
2019.
It's right now, it's currently about halfway through its lease life.
Okay. Has anyone had any talks with the VA to see if they're planning on extending? I know there's been a big expansion out east with the different clinics there, but I believe they purchased 125 acres with the apartment facility, or? I'm just hearing different things that the VA possibly could be looking at.
We've been having ongoing discussions with the VA ever since the city has gotten involved on this. And what, you know, what, what we need to do is, we need to tie this up before we move forward with any further tenants. We want to make sure that we can look them in the eye, commit to them in saying, we are committed, the city is committed, the county's committed, the state is committed to making this thing a viable center. And so before we move further with any tenants further, we want to make sure that this, that this facility is sustainable for the future.
You know, and that was a problem when we were over there years ago, that we had. It's really hard to execute a lease with, with, and, and actually fulfill your fiduciary responsibility and ethical responsibility when you can't see that the, the facility may be open for even the term of the lease. And so I can understand that, that, that was a difficulty we had too. You can sign a 20-year lease, and you know your financials aren't going to get you a year or two, and that ends up with other lawsuits, so, and that's very important to have, that stability to, to be able to draw tenants into the building.
I absolutely agree with that, by the way. In real estate, and, you know, we're, we're in it. And as we market a building, we're, I've said this all along, we're go or we're stop. There's no in-between, and right now, we're in-between, and this is not a good place to be as a real estate developer. So you, you can see the, the other, the other tenants listed on the slide with LCC being the second biggest. Valor Home is a project that we're very excited about, and they're in that, we're in, in that purgatory right now with them as well, waiting to, to, to understand the fate. A couple other things listed there, the image, the image of Lorain with a boarded-up hospital, you know, coming into town if we close this building. And also alternatives, trying to keep the VA in the county, in the city of Lorain, from the city's perspective. And I, I really think that there's a question of whether they would even stay in the county. The, the other thing with the VA Hospital is that their lease also calls for the South Shore Development Company to keep the building open six months, at least six months after they announce the closure of the property. So there's a carrying cost that we'd be obligated to keep the building open, and then they also have the option to take over the operations of the, of the facility if they elect to So from a cost perspective, we've got $675,000 each from the county and the city guaranteeing the state loan. We've got $250,000 outstanding loan to the city that would be, you know, if we decide to close, there would be no, no way to pay that back. We've got our $300,000 of payables. We've got an estimate of $200,000 to carry the VA for six months after we gave notice to close the building. We'd have additional costs to physically shut down the plant, drain water pipes, secure the building to make sure that vandals stayed out. Over $100,000 in income tax that would be lost from the VA to the city of Lorain, and ongoing legal cost to work this all out with our tenants and, and have them relocated. So I've got a total of $2.1 million plus, and that's an estimate, to close the facility if we decided to close today.
You said the $100,000 income tax, that was just from the VA?
That is just the VA, correct.
Okay.
That's an, that's approximate, I think it's actually north of that. I think it's, Doug would speak better, but I think it's more like 120,000 a year. So if you continue to develop South Shore, you avoid the $2.1 million shutdown, and when I say you, I'm talking collectively, the state, the city, South Shore, the county. There's approximately $350,000 shortfall this year that we're projecting. And just to put that in perspective, at a $10 a foot lease gross, which is not what we're, what we're marketing, we're marketing more around $15 a foot gross, but at $10 a foot, to be conservative, is 35,000 square feet of space. Could be one user that could, that could turn this thing to a break-even, even in this year. So that's just to give you some, some gauge of, of where we're at. The project total of the, the property after we demo the D building is 250,000 square feet, and we've leased up approximately 100,000 square feet after Valor Home would move in. So that would leave us of 100, 150,000 square feet available. There's a lot of upside is the point there, and I think in, when we, when we evaluate real estate, if we can have a break-even point with somewhere around a 50% occupied or just over 50% occupied, that's a good, that's a good pro forma. That's a, it's a, it's a good asset.
At your $10 a square foot, being a conservative number, is that including CAM?
$10 a foot would, $15 a foot would be gross, which would include CAM.
Okay.
So I'm being conservative in saying, even if we, essentially, that would be, $10 a foot would be leasing the space for $5 a foot, plus a $5 CAM to get you to the $10. Our, our operating cost with utilities is somewhere around $5. So it's a CAM plus utilities.
Okay, is this including build-out costs too?
No build-out costs included in that. And I'll speak to that a little more on the pro forma. So in 2012, again, I've got no leasing projections in this pro forma. I, I felt that it was important to be extremely conservative in this, in this pro forma. So you've seen the 2012 numbers from the budget earlier, the 2013 projecting 15,000 square feet. So that means between now and January, we would lease out 15,000 square feet of additional space. And I've got that pro forma at $10 a foot, not the $15 a foot, which is what we would market the space for. There's an increase in expenses, obviously, as we bring more tenants in, and as we can afford to increase expenses to keep the building maintained well and to keep our existing tenants happy. So, you know, our, as our goal is to always decrease expenses, increase revenue, we realize that we have to increase expenses to keep our tenant base happy and, and have overall tenant retention. So our net income would go to negative $14,000 in 2013. I've got $5 a foot in that capital line item, which is roughly $75,000 of the 200 for some general TI work. It most likely would not be enough to cover a tenant, you know, a 15,000 square foot tenant, but we have other means to accomplish that. A good example is the Valor Home, where their grant allowed them to improve the space on their own, you know, on their own dime. We also, with a, with this pro forma, we put ourselves in a position where we can show private institutions, you know, that we have a, a plan, and that hopefully, they would lend on the right tenant, lend for the TI over the term of that guaranteed contract with our tenant. So I've, I've put in a $5 per foot improvement cost, and then the other 125,000 in the capital would go towards continuing to invest in the infrastructure of the building. So in 2013, I show negative $212,000. In 2014, I've got another 15,000 square feet leased, which shows us a negative, negative, negative $94,000 net loss, again, spending another 125,000 improving the, the mechanicals, electrical systems, whatnot, throughout the building. And then in 2015, a, a profit of $23,000.
Greg, I have a question for you. Lorain County Health and Dentistry is going to be moving, what year are they out? Because I read in the papers, they're only paying a courtesy lease of $3 a square foot. What's their square footage?
That's correct. They are in until May of 2013, and they are expected to have their building finished by then and, and move out. They are paying $3 a foot to South Shore, and they are not in this, I'm not taking that revenue out of this pro forma, so you wouldn't, you would think that I would have a big chunk of money that I would have to take out, but at $3 a foot, they're actually costing us money to be in the building.
How many square feet do they, because that's probably the most attractive piece.
12,000 square feet. Oh, the building's 22,000, and they've got about half it. 12,000 square feet.
Because that's about the most attractive piece that's moving ready without a lot of build-out costs, I would think.
That is correct. That, that entire building is our most marketable real estate.
Are you working on, who are you working with to try to get in there?
We've got a, a couple of users, one is a 30,000 square foot user that we've got that we're talking to right now. We're not sure on the timing if the May 2013 timing would work for them, but we are marketing the space heavy right now. So our plan for the sustainability, obviously, the first line item, increase revenue, decrease expenses, it's very simple, but sometimes you have to keep it simple. And we, we continue to decrease our expenses by increasing our energy efficiency and putting that money from our grant that we're spending right now to good use to try to reduce those costs, and obviously, leasing up to increase our, our revenue. And we continue to stick with our, our model of being a community center and targeting community users. We know we have to close on active prospects that we have right now that we've been pursuing. We continue to look for government-sponsored, supported projects like the Valor Home, where their grant money can help, you know, get them to the table and get, you know, get us through some of those TI dollars. And we're also set up now with the condominium to be able to be in the position to sell off portions of the building. portions of the building and still collect CAM fees that keep our operating costs neutral. And then we're looking at expanding existing tenants. The VA, there's a tremendous need in Lorraine County with the vets, and you'll hear probably from them later, that, you know, that they've continued to grow in this facility. And we're hoping that they will expand physically in the building in coming years, as well as LCC, who has expanded already once since we've been onboard. And their lease is up at the end of this year. They can only do two-year leases. And we're looking forward to getting into the details of what they may need and being able to expand them further. You know, I said earlier that we're in a position that we feel that we can start looking at the private banks to help us on funding some of this TI improvement work if we're able to bring the tenant to the table. And then we're also looking at other government programs, alternative energies and other cost-saving programs that we've been continually spending time on. So, Doug, do you want to go through the proposed solution, please?
Yeah. As we've been working with ORA, really for about the last 15 to 18 months here, we've been trying, not only the city but ORA, to get our hands around what exactly do we have here? Even though the city was operating it for nine or 10 months, we were just flying by the seat of our pants, quite literally, trying to make sure that the money's coming in was matching the money going out. But having a professional firm come in and help us identify what the needs are for this facility really provided a much-needed sense of that this project can work. So, for the last year, we've been taking a look at everything within this facility to determine what can be cut, what can be done better, and that's what's happened. As the new administration came onboard earlier this year, and the letter with some of the issues, the pending issues that were out there came in, as I had discussions with the mayor, one thing was very clear, and that was, we need to, we'd like to see the center operational. That's, you know, that's one of the highest priorities. But the next priority is, let's end our financial obligation. Let's put an end, you know, let's put this guarantee behind us. And so, what we did was, as we reviewed this situation with ORA, we tried to come up with a proposal. And the proposal that's outlined herein is what the city has prepared, you know, with the administration, to put together a comprehensive plan that not only keeps the center operational, but it gets us out from underneath our financial obligation. As the mayor said, it's getting to that end line where we can say we no longer have an obligation to it, the guarantee is put behind us. So, this proposal that we put together really has five components. One is providing funding for the operating shortfalls. There has been operating shortfalls, and as we get more tenants in here, you know, we just need to cover it. And that's why the three-year pro forma is in here, is because that's what it's going to realistically take to get this to being a cash-long property again. It's only going to need to be at 50% occupancy for it to break even. Years ago, the utilities were much higher, and when we had looked at this, occupancy had to be at 80%, so it was not sustainable then. However, there's been a lot of changes and more efficiencies put in place that it now is only going to take half of the space to be filled for it to operate. So, what we've done here is, we've taken a look, and the pro forma has those shortfalls. We basically took and said, that's what we're going to fund. How do we do that? We're going to have to jointly do it between the city and the county, because we are 50-50 partners in this, okay? This was an obligation born years ago, but it's an obligation that we are going to have to deal with. And so, basically, what we're doing is simply going to cover the shortfalls to the extent that we have to, just to make this a break-even proposition. And that's what the city did when it provided 250,000 when ORA took over. Flip the next slide.
Before you go on, I just want to say, I see you're putting 200,000 in the first year, and the county's only putting in 100,000 the first year. Any thoughts as to putting a city governmental agency in the building, like, say, a substation for the police department, which would cover maybe partially a security issue, so that you will have ongoing presence in that building going forward, instead of the cash of 200, maybe part of that be rent as an ongoing basis as a city governmental agency?
At one point, we did look actually at using city auxiliary, but there's still a cost to the city auxiliary. And in terms of manpower, there was a determination that they might, you know, they don't know if they had quite the manpower to put in there. So, what we've tried to do is to keep this, we're trying to simply get our hands around this to make it operational. Might something like that happen in the future? That's something we can certainly look at.
I think that needs to happen. Like, the county has a presence there. Betty Sutton has an office there. Sheriff Brown has an office there, but the city doesn't have any of their departments in that building. And I think, I mean, county does. We have our title office there. So, everybody does, except for the city. So, I think you should have, at least, like I said, a subdepartment of the police department. I know it's going to cost a little bit of money, but instead of the 200,000, that could be part of the 200,000.
Well, I don't even know if, I think the 200,000, that's not coming out of the city's general fund on it. They're actually getting a benefit of having the income tax come in as well. I would like to see them, if they want to make it sustainable, put a presence in there. Putting some type of department, city office in there, make it a long-term.
I think that's what Laurie was talking about.
Right. Were you saying instead of the 200,000 or in addition to the 200,000?
Well, one or the other. I mean, if you're going to put 200,000, that's a one-year opportunity. If you have somebody that's going to be in there to sustain the, you know, the viability of this project for long-term, it would be nice to see a city department there.
I would like to see it in addition to the 200,000 they're putting in.
Well, when I had met with the mayor and Mr. Rangel a couple of weeks ago, talking about all these different issues and figuring out what could or can't be done, we discussed at the health department possibly and stuff, that they have long-term debt service against those buildings and such. And currently, they couldn't. But I know there's been discussion, although they moved City Hall into this building years ago, so.
Any chance of that, Mayor, putting, I mean, I think that would be a twofold idea is to have some security there for the tenants, make them feel more secure, having the police station there, a substation.
Sure. I look to, aside from that issue, the city commitment going back several years into this project and the funds that the city put in. And I know it's been discussed, general fund dollars, non-general fund dollars. The fact of the matter is, the city commitment on this project has been a pretty serious commitment over the past several years, as outlined on this sheet. But more to what you said, the topic has come up at a health board meeting, in terms of the health department, with the futures of that building, and whether St. Joe's would be a viable option. You know, big dreamers have brought up City Hall. I have certainly been on the record saying, I don't support where City Hall is. I like my view, but it should be a view that somebody who's paying a lot of money has. That's longer-term, obviously.
I've heard you say that.
Yes. And it's got to happen. But bottom line is, if the city is able to get a presence there, and we're underway with some plans now for a central services facility, and we're looking at different areas, and that area's come up, believe me, I don't want to have this discussion and proposal and have it, if it goes through, it goes through and then back away. We want to make sure that it stays going. I mean, it's a central part of our city, and if there's a way that we can do it, we'll do it.
Thank you.
On the, with the sale of the Valor Home, or the leasing of it, there's a fee associated with that for what, ORA? What percentage of that? They're getting a commission with the sale, as I was told.
Maybe 6%. It's a 6% commission.
6% on what is that?
On the sale, which is 3, $298,000, $298,000 sale.
Okay. Would ORA be willing to give that commission to help fund this project? Because right now, I don't see ORA or IRG really have, I know you do get, what, $48,000 for managing? That's a low price, I admit that. But what other, I guess, what skin in the game do you have if this project fails?
Well, I can tell you that we've got three vice presidents that sit in the monthly board meetings. We've got myself, the Director of Property Management, Lee Berger, Director of Construction. We've got a property manager, and we've got a site manager, and we've got our Director of Operations, all committed to this project. We are putting everything we have forward, our best foot forward from an organization. And it's also important to understand that ORA is not IRG. We are a third-party manager. I think that's been misrepresented in the papers. And it's also important to know that IRG has nothing to gain from this project. They are not, they're not an investor. They're not, they don't stand to make any money as a profit. They simply agree to join the South Shore Board and run the South Shore Board to bring their real estate expertise to the table and their good reputation, and hired their management company, who's helped them get to where they are in Ohio, to do the job. And we agreed to a, I would say, considering the task at hand, a well-below-market rate for our services. And our only upside at this point is, as from Ohio Realty, which is a for-profit company, is our ability to get a 6% commission on a deal. And this is a deal that we've worked for two and a half years to close.
Well, would you be willing to, or ORA actually be willing to use the funds to help with offsetting the cost and then having South Shore reimburse you when it turns a profit in 2015?
I think that, I think that that's something we could consider.
Okay.
From the background, the two and a half years ago, IRG and Mr. Litter necessarily weren't pulled to the table screaming and kicking, but it did take a lot of discussions. And Mr. Litter's want to help the community out, that he has a major investment with owning the Ford Plant Facility, and the ability to take him to the state, where they are more than familiar with all the projects, the Goodyear Plant, the Dayton Project, to give some certainty to the state that he was going to bring a professional team there and not a bunch of volunteers to try and operate a center of this point. So, I mean, you guys have given a lot, and I appreciate everything you guys have done. I mean, it's a very difficult project when you got into it, so you're turning it around, but it's just going to take a little more time.
Right.
Quite honestly, without a group like ORA, this project likely would have shut down. Because you need to have that expertise from construction services to leasing services, someone that can be on the ground floor at all times. And that's what they've brought to this, is they've brought that stability, which it did not have previous to this. So, there is a value to it. And as you mentioned yourself, it's below, it is really below-market value. So, we do have to provide them with some upside to really stay in the deal. I see this as a good value for us, because as I've worked with them, whenever I've needed things, they've been more than happy. And they've spent probably more than, they've definitely spent more than their share of time, based on the monthly fee that they're getting.
I believe everyone wants the project to succeed. I'm just looking at ways to put in some capital from everybody, and then, once it starts to turn a profit, then everybody can sharing the gains, so.
We can have those discussions. In terms of meeting the operating shortfall, if I could go back to the proposed solution, with going to this, what we're asking the state to do on a lot of this is, if we're going to invest our money into the operating shortfall, the state's not getting anything from this. But what we're asking them to do is, on a dollar-for-dollar basis, reduce the commitment, the state loan on this, and thereby reducing our guarantee. That way, we're getting a bang for our buck. It's not just being thrown out the window. We're actually getting a dollar-for-dollar reduction of our guarantee for putting this money in there, so it is going for good use. That's one of the things that we're asking to do. As we did have a discussion in the mayor's office a couple of weeks ago with Mr. Kalow and the mayor, one of the things that the commissioner brought up was using, you know, if we can increase some of the taxes, either through existing tenant base or new tenants, can we use some of that new taxes to actually reduce both of ours' exposure to the operating shortfall? And certainly, I think that that is a valid point. And so, what we did was, we built in our job creation tax program, that what we'll do is, anytime we get a new tenant who's going to begin paying income taxes, or an existing tenant that goes above their current base, what we'll use is 50% of that income tax, and that will go, that'll go directly into the program or into the project, and it'll actually reduce our operating shortfall. So, the operating shortfalls that you see on this sheet on A is really going to be the maximum. Those could end up being reduced going forward if we can get some new tenants in there, or we can get some of these tenants to expand.
And the tag on that, Doug, while you're on that point, though, as Greg said, if the 30,000 square foot tenant comes in, that ends up being a two-year fill.
That would accelerate, it would accelerate this pro forma.
It would then decrease the county and the city's need to fund a shortfall.
That's right.
The whole reason behind this sort of 36 to 48 months is, we want it to be realistic. We didn't want to come here and tell you, hey, we just need money for the next year, because it may not be realistic. You know, we are, we're sort of, sometimes you get lucky and you fall into a good tenant. That is sort of what may be happening here. Is it going to happen? It's not known at this point in time, but it's something that we're definitely pursuing.
When was the, other than the Valor Home, when was the last tenant that came in, and what was the square footage that they took? You don't have to say the name, but just...
It was Little Lighthouse. How many square feet?
4,500.
4,500 from the...
4,500, when was that?
Earlier than 2011.
In 2011?
Yeah.
So, in 2011, you only got 4,500 square feet leased?
No, it was just the last tenant. We also had an expansion, what was the LCC expansion?
About 7,000.
7,000.
And when was that?
LCC in 2011.
2011, alright.
And a lot of this, again, is coming with a lot of uncertainty. And the college certainly has stepped up, and they would like to maintain their presence here as well. That's why they did take more space.
And Greg, wasn't Alpha Care 2011 moving also?
Correct, yeah.
And how many square?
Eight thousand.
Oh, eight thousand. I mean, that's 19,000 square feet in 2011 alone.
The Valor Home project would have closed had there not been some of the issues with the legal to get the condos set up, and then obviously with the last four months of what we've been dealing with on the property. This plan, you know, what Doug is talking about, being three years, and this alludes to what Mr. Cortez was talking about earlier, it gives us the ability to say to a tenant that's on the fence, yeah, we don't have to go back to the city and the county at the end of 2012 to make sure we can continue to lease space to you. You know, we're able to say, we're in that full-go mode and not in-between somewhere. And we've got a lot of, we've got prospects right now that are sitting back waiting to see what we're going to do.
What is the, what's the plan if the state turns this down?
I don't necessarily think that the state is going to. In our conversation with the state, it was very much a very open discussion. That was why we went down there to make a presentation very similar to this, without a dedicated proposal, because we didn't know what they would accept. But they seem very open to knowing that they will work with us to try and make sure that this project continues to move forward. They kind of pointed us in the direction that they'd like to see some of these things. You know, obviously, they'd like to see some reduction of their debt. You know, there's other things that they'd like to see this facility open. So, based on those conversations, that's what this proposal was built around, was phone conversations that I, the mayor, have had with the state, as well as that face-to-face discussion that we had with them.
Basically, a verbal agreement from the state with this plan.
There's no verbal agreement. This is, when we went down there, what they took out, what we took out of this meeting was, you, city, county, put together a proposal that you give to us, and we will review it. And that's what we've done. We've tried to minimize our, we've tried to really minimize our obligation, not only to the state, but to this facility, to make sure that we try and get out of this, I don't want to say get out of this, we get out of our obligation as our guarantee.
It's pretty much the same proposal you showed to the state, right?
No. Well, this proposal...
As far as with the county involvement and that?
The original, what we took down to was very much more simplified. As we had this, we worked this out in the week after that meeting with the state, and we came up with this more, much more detailed proposal that the mayor sent down to them last week.
But I mean, as far as the $300,000 commitment between the city and the county?
In terms of funding the shortfall? Yes.
That's what was presented, alright.
Yeah, that's what the city presented, Tom. Like I said, we hadn't seen it. It's what they had worked on, trying to meet with ORA and Greg on what would take to do it. And that's when these other discussion points came up, when I spoke with people from the state, Commissioner Kokoski spoke with the people from the state. And then through the meeting last week that I attended with you and the mayor...
Yes.
On something that might work, and you guys doing the upfront cost and spreading ours out over three years... On something that might work and you guys doing the upfront costs and spreading ours out over three years, hoping there's less exposure because they then lease out more property.
Yes.
The, the $300,000 commitment from the county, if that would change, where maybe more of the burden went on to the city, what type of impact would that have with the state?
In terms of funding just a shortfall?
Or to go through with the project, or what you're asking the state to do to forget the debt. If the state, or if the city took on more responsibility to pay down the debt, same thing basically, but instead of $300,000 from the county, maybe only $100,000 from the county, just throwing out a number.
Well, my concern would be from the government's side of it, and not the finance side, is that would probably then lower the ability of ours to have as much of our guarantee erased.
Yep, part of this thing.
Because he asked how much money we had in the game, they asked how much we had, and he asked for those numbers because I had leases, I sent you the numbers, 124,000. We put in from our title, has been the county's only amount of money in the facility through leasing and using space in the center. But we hadn't had a direct.
Well, the reason I ask the question is, $100,000 each year, the question comes up, where would we get this money to pay for it?
Where would we get the money if we had to pay the 300,000 if the center closed tomorrow?
The 675.
Well, actually, we can go through.
No, our, our portion.
Well, we, Mr. Cortez, actually, I spoke with.
Or 675, yeah.
I spoke with Mr. Cortez on this, and you felt that we have, what, 10 years to pay on it? And we could go through and renegotiate that, it's not like we're going to have to come up with $675,000 tomorrow.
My understanding is that the debt that was issued for both the state's portion and the city and county's loan guarantee was part of a larger bond issuance that was done by the state earlier, and it was on a 20-year bond. The state has been making the payments on that bond. So, when payments began after the deferment periods, now, I think they're into a third deferment period now, the state's been fairly generous. And I think the payback is at 0% interest now, should the worst-case scenario come up. My understanding, a few years ago, was that we would pick up the debt service with the remaining years, and it would be accelerated debt service, but it would capture that by the end of when the obligations on those bonds were done. A few years back, it also included a balloon payment with a potential refinance. I don't know where that went under the last extension, so there, there is some potentials there for a collaboration. But no, it would not all be, in my understanding, doable at one particular moment.
At 0% interest for the last 10 years, and note, it's $75,000 a year to make hole, unless you can negotiate it down.
There is a distinction you need to make, there, there's two obligation. There is the state's obligation on their bonds, and they're paying that, on our, on the city's behalf, on the county's behalf. We have a separate obligation, there's a separate note, mortgage and guarantee that the county, both the city and the county have. Regardless of what those bond balances are, both the city and the county are, are still at the 675, regardless of whether those bonds get paid back.
Right.
Now, would they, would they be willing to?
Right, nobody's disagreeing with that, but all, all I'm saying is that if there's eight years left, the state would make us pay the 675 within the eight years. We wouldn't get the opportunity to spread it over 20, or it wouldn't be due immediately, it would be due on the, in the remaining timeframe of the issuance.
Absolutely.
Right, well, and the thing too is if, well, I'm looking at, and I don't know if they would go for this, but if the city actually used the income tax from the VA, the clinic, the $100,000 a year, that would pay for our, our portion. And in 2015, when it starts to turn a profit, South Shore could start paying down its own deficit.
It, it's very.
Because the deficit belongs to.
It's very simple and easy, but that's, those are income taxes that have been paid to the city and are part of their budget as well, their general fund budget. So, by simply reallocating that 100,000, you're reallocating the city's general fund budget, which has been identified potentially for other uses. So, it's the same situation that you're running into with the county, in terms of where does the money come from? You know, we're trying to preserve, we're trying to preserve as much of the city's tax base as we can.
And I'm trying to preserve the county's budget.
Absolutely, but we both have a joint obligation on this, and that's, and that's where we're at.
It's our debt though, I mean, it's our debt.
It's not our debt.
Well, it's going to be if they close.
Has there been any consideration to income tax sharing with regard to some things at St. Joe's? I mean, the city has a program in place.
Anything above and beyond the base, Jim, that they currently have, is what is one of those proposals? Anything above and beyond that would be a 50% split to help down our guarantee, that's what I had talked with the mayor, and they had added to the last proposal.
Sounds reasonable, I was just asking.
Yeah, you were just doing other work while we were doing this, but if the base is 120 or whatever that number is.
Right.
Anything above and beyond that, as of the date we come up this agreement between the city, the county and the state, anything that grows above and beyond that would then be, 50% of that amount of money would then be split between us two entities to lower our guarantee over the three or four-year period to get it done through the end of 2015.
Absolutely.
And I guess where I'm, I would like to see maybe the entire 50% go to pay down our portion. And that, I mean, the city is going to benefit in the long run with the income tax on it. The county's not getting anything as far as any type of revenue coming in from this project.
We never have been.
Right, for the use of the center though, and we are a service organization, this county commissioner is providing service to the public. This is a very important service that we are tied into, that predates all of us here, except maybe Jim. And we have a responsibility, I believe, because if it's a 10-year note, it's 75,000 a year, what's the difference of putting 100, 150 a year now over the next three or four years? And we're out of it versus 10 years into a closed facility, that's going to haunt us and the city of Lorain and the lack of services. Because who says the VA's even going to relocate back in Lorain County? They may just shut down, say, we got the new permit facility, veteran services, ship everybody there. I mean, those are what we have to look at.
With regard to the clinic, I, I do believe, I don't have actual data available right now, but we looked at this a few years ago. I think the clinic also draws from outside the county. Into some of the contiguous counties on, on the borders, which brings people here, and they, they do spend here when they're here. So, you know, there, there's a bit of an attraction piece there and, and the ability for, for services. And hopefully, while they're here, they, they eat lunch and do a little shopping and come up with some other things, I mean, there's some tertiary benefits.
And there's also a benefit here in regards to our jobs Ohio and Team Lorain County, as I informed, as I said on the executive board, then I worked out our sub-grant agreement. There's going to be reporting responsibilities for all the communities to get back with Team Lorain County, which will then report those numbers to Team Neo, which is one of the four in the state of Ohio, our new jobs Ohio to administrate. That keeps our job retention numbers up, which make us qualify, hopefully, for more money in the following funding year that we're doing a better job based on the baselines they gave us we had to perform in.
Can I, can I have backup on one issue that was said here earlier, just for clarifications? And this predates you, Doug, too, but it was indicated that the electric bill at South Shore was switched to the city's name because there was no director. That really isn't very accurate, the, the electric bill was switched to the city because the prior safety service director was working with a consultant that guaranteed the city that they'd get the electric bill waived and not have to pay the utilities. And the only way that they were going to be able to do that is if the utilities were in, in the city's name at the time. We, you and I had those meetings with them.
I remember those discussions, I didn't know where it went, it just went in the city.
So, it wasn't because there wasn't a director, it was another one of these cases where, and I was on the board at the time, we were being beat up because we wouldn't enter this program and hire these people who were going to convince Ohio Edison that we didn't have to pay the electric bill after we ran up a great big bill.
I remember the discussions, but I didn't know where it went to, like basically.
It went to a huge deficit that the city's now facing to pay the electric bill.
Okay.
Question I have, I've been asking to sit down to go through the summary for 2011, and haven't heard back on that as far as the financials. I asked Mike Challenger, and then he was told that he would have to get a board approval in order for them to sit down with me. What I'd like to see is go through the numbers and see how it actually adds up and where it's going to be a profit as far as maintenance, repairs of the building, could we make that arrangement?
If it's, if it's, I mean, I provided to city council Monday evening, I provided a simplified income statement, I can certainly send that to you.
Well, I'm looking for more of a detailed business plan that kind of shows your financial forecast, your budget forecast, I should say, where it's going to get you into the black.
Breaks it, takes what we have here and breaks it down a little bit further.
Right.
On a pro forma or on a financial history?
Financial history and the pro forma, I just want to get a history of it, and then how you're planning to get that $23,000, just more details on it.
Okay.
And, you know, if I can go to the South Shore and work with you guys, and you can just show me the numbers.
Yeah, the, the request came from Mr. Challenger.
Right.
And from, from a third-party manager reporting to the board, I needed the request to come through the board and not through a member, just like any other member, if they were to call us and go meet with somebody else, I need the board to be okay with that direction. The board approved it, and you had sent through your calendar with some available dates.
Yeah, I've sent two requests, different calendars.
And I wasn't sure if today was going to satisfy what you were looking for, it sounds like it would not, so we'll, we'll respond to that email and set something up.
Well, basically, today, we don't need any resolution to approve this because there is nothing back from the state agreeing to modifying, fixing, changing, denying for proposal, but an intent to support from the board to move forward. I don't have a problem with that, I mean, it's, I think the state has an appetite for looking at this based on the discussions we had.
I think the state was excited about the fact that they had so many different levels of government there in support of that. The fact that the veterans are there, the fact that the veterans are expanding with the Valor Home, it was very important to them as well. So, I, I think this is, you know, something that we need to go forward.
We will begin reviewing that, I'll discuss it with the administration, I will certainly come back and discuss it with the commissioners as to this is what they are willing to do, then are we all on board or are we not?
We are.
So.
Well, I, I would actually like to.
Well, you can get your additional information later, it's just a matter of, are you in favor of keeping the center open, or are you not in favor of keeping the center?
There are a lot of uncertain questions I would like to have answered, and I wasn't involved with Columbus, so I'd like to contact, well, there you go.
It only takes two at this point, Tom, and we've been going through this for years, and you can get all the information you want. But currently, so the state knows that the county's on board, two commissioners so far are agreeable with the plan that's presented.
We would like to have you on board as well, but to go forward, we, we have to have an answer.
But if he needs more information, we can wait for him to agree to it at a later point, too, but not to stop what the city's doing. You're more than time.
There is, I mean.
But we're trying to work on a timeline.
There is a little urgency in that, we, we do have some outstanding payables that need to be met, and Valor Home has funding sources that are only going to wait so long. And if Valor Home decides, their, their funding sources decide, you know, we can't wait any longer, there's going to probably be no way to meet those payables, and we are getting to that point of inevitability. And then, you know, then we have to look at that other option. At least with this proposal, you know, it, it gets us to the point that we try and get off from meet our obligation within the next 36 to 48 months. And we still try and maintain this facility as operational. So, I mean, there is some urgency, but, you know, at this point in time, until we do hear back from the state, there is no resolution, and council is under, city council is under the, has been notified of the same, is that we will come back to them as soon as we have a dedicated proposal.
And in the process, Tom, what will happen, then, once DOD comes up, or whatever they're being called now, comes up with a proposal, they can accept and we accept. It's the last goal the board will control yet for approval, so we'll have that process to go through, and if somebody from the city or whatever has to go down and discuss it. Remember those days, Mr. Cortez?
I don't remember them fondly, and, and jumping on that, the, regardless of what the funding scheme is here and what the boards decide to do in city council, I, I really just like to say, it's, it's, looking at what's been done by the city and what's been done by the county, had they, had they been in the game years ago, I don't think the center would be where it is. So, to, you know, Mayor, now his administration, IRG, the veterans that are here trying to support that, you know, credit. Because there was a lot of missed opportunities years ago, because there was a lot of infighting and resentments and inability to cooperate and collaborate on an outcome that was necessary for that center, and I sat out there as a chair of that board for years and watched those opportunities evaporate very quickly. So, I'm not saying what you should or shouldn't do is, but I'm just saying it's nice to see everybody at least trying to work together and get, and get a viable solution. That wasn't possible several years ago.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we taking public comment? I guess we are, we will? Yeah, we'll take public comment.
Thank you, Commissioners David Ashenhurst Oberlin, this has been a very interesting and enlightening discussion. I usually like to work through things in writing, but I got a lot out of that, and I found the presentation on the web that was made on the 6th, which is just about the same thing that was here, except there were, there are more sort of follow-up steps on it. Just a couple of observations, I think Commissioner Williams' questions are really on point in a lot of ways. And I guess one of the things I'd ask is, when it does start to go into the black, where does the black go? Does it go back to you guys, or does it then start to build up some sort of fund within South Shore Community Development Corporation? And what sort of? I mean, that's, that's not showing here sort of what happens after the three years, does that shortfall come back?
Sure, and I can certainly answer that, the first, will there be a split of that profit? One going to pay off debt that we would be scheduled to pay, whether it be the city loan or these additional loans that would be coming through. And then, there's capital reserves, at some point, we're going to need new roofs, we're going to need new asphalt, we're going to need a new parking garage. We would, we would be capital, doing capital reserves as much as possible to be able to fund future projects.
Well, again, it seems to me that even some of that split could go to capital reserves and some could go back to pay this back. I mean, that's just.
Pay the county tax.
Pay back, pay back debt and capital reserve, some balance of that.
Yeah.
Do you have the details on that? Do you have the terms of that?
We don't have any terms to negotiate.
Well, that's, that's kind of those pro formas you're looking for in years, in years out, that it go past that.
Not going to interrupt you, David, but go over it, this was the ability that the city can show their support from the board of commissioners to go forward with this plan.
No, I understand.
To do all the details in the paperwork on something that may or may not go through would be futile and a waste of time and resources.
But I'm just talking about a principle, and a principle can be set out there even if you don't know what all the numbers are. And, and I guess I just was asking about that. Second, at some point, can somebody tell me why the social security offices didn't move there instead of?
I know.
Sure can.
Well, I'd like to know that because.
I can answer that question very easily, because when I was out there, we bid on that several times with GSA, and we weren't successful. When, when an office, a federal government office like that is looking for office space, they do an RFP. And it's quite a lengthy process and a very big document. You would think it's just as easy as, you know, getting a square footage cost and boom, they move. But leave it to the federal government to make us look like amateurs when it comes to paperwork. And, and so, several times, we bid on that and we were unsuccessful. And I believe they went down to the city center for a while, I don't know if they're still down there or.
No, that's what I'm saying.
But this is way, but this is way back when, we did bid on all of that stuff.
But I'm saying, they've just moved out of the city center and built a new building, and I just sort of thought.
I don't know if they recently bid on it, but through the 2000s, and Doug's saying they did, and you know what I'm talking about, when they, the GSA is really something to work with.
Again, I know the old, I, I understand what they were thinking in the old time, but it looks like they've just done something in the last couple of years.
They built a brand-new facility where the Old Sisters Chicken was at at Fourth and Reed Avenue, on a very small footprint.
I, I just, that's regrettable. And I guess the one other thing that I wanted to observe at this point is that the idea that there's a nonprofit board of nine people and five are, are appointed by a for-profit entity is, I mean, I spent 25 years in either grant-making or grant-seeking, and that would not be something that would get a lot of support from. I, I hope that at some point, if, if the city, the county, IRG and the community, you know, might all have three people on it each or something like that, and, and have it a little bit more, I, I think that may be something that is making that taxable income problem.
There is a reason why it is structured that way, is because if you have a, a public entity who has a controlling interest in the board, and you provide funding for that, it then shows up on your books. And as you can see from the books, the city has no appetite to have this, have this project roll up under their financial statements. And I would imagine the county doesn't have that interest either, but we could talk about it if you'd like.
No, but I'm, I'm not talking about it being, you know, I'm just. No, but I'm not talking about it being, you know, I'm just talking about freestanding directors appoint, just how they get them, like the Community Action Agency has certain requirements for...
This is a private not-for-profit, not a public not-for-profit.
Understood.
And when we negotiated this two and a half years ago between the IRG and the ORA, because there's not staffing at that facility necessarily, the expertise of having those people on the board to convey to the entire board members what was needed to make the facility operate. You remember, there's no managing person there anymore. A cost-savings entity for forty-eight grand a year, they're doing all of this in the past. What was the director you had was over a hundred thousand. The second one was seventy-five thousand plus the maintenance. It was pretty...
When I came to the board in 2002 out there, maybe 2001, I was a little concerned to find out we were paying over a hundred and fifteen thousand plus for somebody to take care of the center. And you're right, it was about sixty-five thousand, but all in probably closer to ninety, ninety-five thousand with Bennys and everything, and the first one was probably closer to a hundred and forty thousand.
So you had like quarter of a million dollars. Now, the expertise is on the board to make sure...
But that, but the expertise on the board, if it's, if it's a private nonprofit, even if it's a private nonprofit, is going to have 501(c)(3) problems eventually if it's controlled by a for-profit entity. I mean, there are, the Oberlin Heritage Center has a controlled housing nonprofit and things like that, but it's just complicated, and if I were, if I were still at a foundation that was being approached for funding this thing, that's the first question I'd ask. And I just say, going forward, you, you know, they're contracting with expertise, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate, I don't even know who IRG is. I just learned who ORA was when the thing came up, because everybody kept saying it, and I'd said, what is ORA? It didn't seem to be, you know, something of the state of Ohio, but, and it wasn't something of the city of Oberlin. So, just a couple of things, but as I say, I'll be interested to see this going forward, too.
He brings up a point on the appointments. You know, when I spoke with Mike, Mike didn't have a real, he wasn't, wasn't really engaged on it. And Mike's a bright guy. He just kind of felt that he had a seat there. And I was wondering, would you guys be willing to put me on the board?
Because of the fact that you have not been in favor of St. Joe's and anti-St. Joe's and trying to sabotage it from the beginning...
Well, hold on, wait. Those are strong words, saying that. I'm not trying to sabotage anything. What I'm looking at for is to make sure it's a viable...
Well, then I'll go, if you don't want Mike go on the board, I'll go on the board, but I'm not, I'm not going to put you on the board when you're anti-St. Joe's. And I've proven that even again last week, when Ted told you he was going to be forwarding the documents from the city, you sent that to the newspaper just like the letter, so...
I got a request. You don't want me to follow a public records request? Reporter came up to me and asked me for it.
How did she know you had it?
Because it was mentioned that you guys gave a presentation in Columbus here.
I'm not talking about the one in Columbus. I'm talking about the one last Wednesday that you got, that was provided, this presentation that was provided.
For input back, Tom. That's what the mayor was asking for in his email. He sent it to me at Wednesday morning about one o'clock in the morning.
I got a request. They came up to me and they asked me for the email on it, on the presentation. I just assumed it was that one. So, that's the one that he got. But again, it was a public records request. I guess you really don't understand, what's wrong with the public having information?
It wasn't ready for the public yet.
It was a proposal that was sent to you by another elected body, asking for some input prior to meeting with the city council.
If a reporter, if a reporter asked for the information...
But they shouldn't even have known that you even had the information.
Because it was brought up in this meeting. He stated that there was a presentation given. So when I got back, they asked me for the presentation, and I sent them what I had.
Never called me.
Me either.
I totally didn't give you a call.
Yeah, he never called me.
We have another public, public comment. Leon?
Hello, Leon Mason, 4818 Tanglewood Drive, Lorain, Ohio, and also 205 West 20th Street, Suite M280. We're in the St. Joe's Community Center. In my professional capacity, I'm with Senator Brown's office. And Mr. Williams, you had asked a question about the discussions with the VA. Our office had, has had discussions with the VA, and their intentions, as conveyed to our offices, they're not looking to leave the St. Joe's facility in the near future. And just let me back up a little bit and describe what a C-Box clinic is. A C-Box clinic is a community-based outpatient clinic. There's twenty-eight in the state of Ohio, and they're constructed to be within twenty-five miles of all veterans. So if you look at Lorain, you'll see Parma, and then Wade Park is not counted as a C-Box clinic, but is a main hub. So, so if you look at the map, you can see it's within twenty-five miles of veterans. So I just wanted to clear that up. But the VA has no intentions of leaving or going anywhere. Now I'm going to speak on behalf of the tenants.
Leon, let me ask you a question here, the VA part of it. Do you believe the intentions of the VAs are to expand their C-Box across the region to provide more services?
Yes, yes. And that's, that actually, that message has been conveyed, conveyed by Secretary Shin Seki to address veterans' issues, and more importantly, to address veterans' homelessness, which implies the Valor Home. And I just wanted to talk about the financial aspects of it. Again, I know this is a difficult deal, and I'm not here to put pressure, but in the same token, there's a lot of finances involved when we talk about trying to get to a deal. You have the Valor Home, which has a certain amount of persons that need to be served for a set period of time. That total amount of that grant is $700,000. That is a VA grant, so $300,000 goes towards the purchase of their space. You also have another entity in our building, which I won't name, but they're having a difficult time continuing their funding because funders are worried about whether or not the building will be able to sustain. They're not getting a report back. So those issues are holding a few things up. I don't want to speak on behalf of the city, but these are federal funds in regards to EECBG funds, which is Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant Funds. Those funds do have a drop-dead allocation date. If those funds aren't spent, they essentially go back. That helps our heating and cooling issues. I know many of you have been in the building, and I can tell you, and this is no negative to the building, but in our office, it was ninety degrees one day. We don't control the temperature. Why? It's because those funds have not been able to be released. Essentially, the city's in the same boat as everyone else. They don't want to put funds in the building that subsequently they'll have to tear down. So those are some of the things that the tenants go through in that building. And I can tell you, I am the senator's grant administrator, but in the same token, I probably answer questions about the status of the building, maybe three to four times per day, and these are from tenants in the building coming to me. So I'd like to get back to my real job, again, as the grants coordinator. But again, there's a lot of things that need to be done. I've been in that building since about 2004. I've worked in the Cleveland office and also in the Columbus office. I do know at one point in time, the city of Lorain did have a community resource officer, as it was called, stationed in that building. At that time, they did, I believe, funding was pulled from that, so they had to close up that office. But again, as tenants, we've approached the South Shore Board and others of ways we think that could possibly help save money and different things. And we did approach them about providing police auxiliary, auxiliary in that building. But in a nutshell, I'd say the largest tenants, of course, are the VA, the college, and then from there, you have Congresswoman Sutton's office, Senator Brown's office, Little Lighthouse, the Lorain Sports Hall of Fame, and I may be forgetting someone.
The county.
Alpha Care.
The county clerk attale.
And the county clerk of courts office. So...
So you're the pseudo-manager? The ORA's not around?
Unfortunately, yes.
With the veterans, do you think they would be willing to commit to a longer-term lease if we're able to resolve this issue?
It's hard for me to speak for the veterans. And just let me, let me throw this out there. As it currently stands, our lease is in violation, our office lease, through the Sergeant of Arms, due to the temperatures in the building. Again, we're able to work through that because we're a little bit, I don't want to use the term "nice," but in a sense, we are. But, and there's legal obligations when you deal with the Sergeant of Arms in a violation of the lease. And that's something I'm trying to, again, not to press the commissioners and city council to move on, but literally, when Mr. Hip spoke about legal consequences, there are legal consequences. And unfortunately, it's unfortunate. So again, let's go past the past and the feet-dragging. We have a plan that, again, in my time, in my eight years with the senator, is now tangible because it has an end line, where there will be no more funding to the state. And of the plans I've seen, it's the best plan, and I'm not just saying that as a tenant. I'm just saying that as someone who resides in the city of Lorain and has pretty good knowledge of the project.
Yeah. There are a lot of uncertainties with it. I'm glad to see that we are moving forward. But, you know, as you know, you got to look out for the taxpayers that we represent, and this is going to be the county.
Right. And I completely understand, but you also have to remember, there are taxpayers within that building.
Yes.
Very well said, Leon. Good afternoon, esteemed Commissioners and everyone else contained in this audience today. Once again, I'm here with an impassioned plea on behalf of my veteran brothers and communities who are taxpayers. Because first of all, each and every person standing up there on that desk right there took an oath to serve the taxpayers and citizens of this community and county. With that being said, I think it's time that we really got past the rhetoric and the if-and's and the where-fors and the why-nots, and fully understand and come together and try to make a plan work where you can save this facility. Because in all actuality, when you did take that oath and said you were going to serve, this is a service job that you have. We served our country, so we think now it's time for you to find a solution to serve us. I mean, you know, Commissioner Williams, we constantly hear you say that you are protecting the taxpayers' money. Has it ever dawned on you that veterans are taxpayers as well for a long period of time?
I believe I'm also protecting the veterans, make sure that we're getting into a project that's going to protect them in the long term.
Okay, well then, let me use some type of analogy for everybody in the room to understand. If you're going to build a building, you're going to use the best possible materials. Say if you're going to use a certain amount of bricks, but there's one brick that potentially can tear down the whole building. It seems like every time we get to this juncture, you're the one dissenting voice that doesn't want to agree with what's going on. And why is that?
No, I'm asking for questions. I'm asking questions, I'm looking for answers, and I don't get that. And, you know, it would be very easy for me to say, go here, and you know what, here's a check. But that's not my responsibility. That's not my job. My job is to ask the questions and make sure that we are being good stewards of the taxpayer money.
Well, if everyone else up there seems to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and I would think that you would respect their expertise and intellect as well, then I still don't understand how is it that you cannot, under no circumstance, and you have exhibited this on more than one occasion, where you can't agree with your, our brethren Commissioners?
I have agreed with them on projects. Actually, with the lease, leasing out the condos last year, I voted yes for that. So there have been agreements with this board.
But then how is it that it's so hard for you to agree with the St. Joe's project and the Valor Home project?
Because there, it's not the Valor Home. I never spoke out against the Valor Home. What I have said is I want to make sure it's a viable plan. We have a history here. Mr. Cordez, when you were the chairman, you actually looked at doing a controlled shutdown of that facility. Is that correct?
Well, we were in a different environment. There was, there was a point in time when we couldn't gather enough partners to see the way forward and continue. But, you know, there was that time period, but we didn't have the same partners then.
Right. But there's been a trend where this has been a project of question. Don't get me wrong, I would love to see this building succeed, but I need to have a plan that I can go back to other entities, like when the mayor of Avon, or former mayor Avon Lake asked me, why does Lorain continue to get some money on this? Other entities that are asking it. How does this benefit the county? That's the questions I'm asking. Once I get the answers, I'm supportive. And don't forget, my, you know...
Yeah, I know. You were about to say that your dad was arrested.
I was a veteran as well.
Okay, well, if you were...
So, I mean, I was in the Air Force. I got a medical discharge on it.
Well, then, by that, by that being said, then, I still don't understand how, and we as a veteran community don't understand how, that you are so adamant, when the other two commissioners say they would like to support this, and you say you still have questions that need to be answered. We fully understand that you have questions that need to be answered, but nonetheless, in the interim, you can at least be partially supportive of this.
Have I come out and said that I'm actually against this right now? I said, the building, I don't care about the building. What I care about is the veterans. I care about keeping that VA clinic here in the county. I've spoken with congressmen on trying to keep a clinic here. So if this would happen to fail, that we actually have support in Washington to keep a clinic in Lorain County.
It's nothing against Lorain.
It's nothing against Lorain. I have family in the city of Lorain.
Well, Commissioner Williams, let me finally say this. By having used a VA facility in Lorain for years, having gone to Wade Park in a foot of snow where there's never been adequate parking, and they herd veterans in there like basically cattle, because that facility, regardless of how much money they've placed into it, is still somewhat inadequate because look how far we have to go. Then you have some veterans that can't afford or some that are physically unable to go there. So Lorain's VA clinic and everything associated with that clinic is viable. So you say you have questions to be answered. Maybe that answered yours.
Well, the question is, where do we come up with basically the $450,000? And I have yet to hear this board answer that question.
Mike Beatty, 1335 West Fifth Street, Lorain, Ohio. I'd like to, well, start with the T-Bowism. Now, everybody doesn't need to get down on their knees or anything like that. I'd like to say, though, first off, that I'm excited. I'm excited about this program. I'm excited about the VA being in Lorain. I'm excited about the Valor House that's going to happen. I'm excited to see Lorain Community College is in this building. I'm excited to see a cornerstone of Lorain existing over a hundred years now, and that building is about as solid as they come. I mean, if we're ever under a nuclear attack, everybody get in that building. Now, there are situations that have to be dealt with here, and they'll be dealt with in the near future. There's a abatement that has to take place in the building, and that situation can be remedied in, in, well, the Valor House coming in there. The Valor House is going to be coming in with thirty people that'll be looking to move back into society in transitional housing. A lot of them already being trained in Portage County at the Freedom House are being trained in abatement and other things like be it lawn care, plumbing, other various things like that. But one of the main things is abatement. So we already have, I guess you could say, in essence, thirty employees that would be ready, willing, and able, and definitely have the time and the ability and the training to start in on that building. So already, we've, we're looking at remediating one situation. Now, I served in the Army in Europe. You look around here, you see guys from Southeast Asia that served. We know that we have two thousand people coming back from Iran and Iraq that are in the county. A lot of them will be coming back here to participate in, be it AMVETS or other service organizations. And already, we have existing in the county of three hundred and eight thousand people. Twenty-six thousand of them are service veterans. That's about one in every eleven people. Now, you wouldn't even know it unless you ask them, because it's not something they volunteer. Sure, a lot of us wear, you know, an American flag, wear a hat saying we participated, maybe have that flag out in front of the house. But unless you really ask somebody, they, they don't volunteer the information. Yet we have a camaraderie, a union, I guess you could say, of like minds, been through like experiences. And I use the term "union" in the respect that it's not like the unions you guys deal with all the time. This union, we found out the first day of basic, you can't strike. So you found out real quick how things work. But there is, at this building, at this, this St. Joe's Community Center, and it's happening, although we, we seem to have, we have, one of our wheels has locked up, I guess you could say. We've got a brake that's seized on us, and we've been unable to move with this project. We have, we have the VA, which is my primary caregiver. I know you guys have the best in the world. I think I have a pretty good thing. I go for my two checkups every year, top-notch doctors, beautiful facility, top-notch facility. And if I wanted to take classes, I have Lorain Community College. Just like these thirty people that will be coming in in the Valor House, they'll be getting schooling there, just like the kids that are currently in high school that are enrolling in college at the same time, saving their parents thousands... at the same time, saving their parents thousands and thousands of dollars, are participating at LC3. The Valor House there, LC3, the Veterans Administration, I'd truly like to see Veteran Services be in this building, because I've been up to the Veteran Services, the old Cook's Building there, and they're back tucked in the corner, if you know where they're at, and if you have a little map, you can find them, in cubicles that a lot of veterans are talking about very, very personal things. And one cubicle can hear the next cubicle. There is no privacy. And we're talking about a lot of disabled veterans that, well, they're, they just don't need, everybody doesn't need to know their business. So I would suggest that we look at the Veteran Services. And then, in the end, I live on West Erie Avenue, West Erie and Fifth, by the V for Victory, by the DAV, the new Disabled Veterans Building that's been rehabbed. And I see the soldiers, just like I did so many years ago, well, future soldiers, running up and down West Erie, getting ready for that, the miles you've got to run, the push-ups you've got to do, the sit-ups you've got to do. And I would like to think that, doggone it, they should be running from the St. Joe's Community Center. I would like to see that the services be located in there. And to make this as, Mr. Felton, who's the president of our Valor Group, a one-stop-shop, you can enlist in the service there at that building, you can get your VA health care there, you can get your college training there, you can get your Veteran Services there. And to have this all located in that one particular place, it's a quality of life issue. And it all starts with this building that has been in, for anybody that grew up in Lorraine, has been around Lorraine for over 100 years now. It's a solid building. There is work that will be done. We have $1.6 million to start the work on it. We have other monies available. We have donations, tens of thousands of dollars have come in, and in just the last six months, for the Valor House. And then we, this brake seized up a couple of months ago. And this has slowed it up. The newspapers started reporting that we were running out of gas, that maybe it wasn't going to happen. Now, of course, we're all pragmatic people. We all have an understanding how a situation like this with government and how the people, the normal, the everyday people, how it works. But we were, I guess, surprised, as a lot of the donors were surprised, that there would be people that couldn't see the synergy of this whole situation, of this building, of the college, of the Valor House, of the VA. Couldn't see how this all would dovetail and how this all could come together. I know it was just a short while ago, Commissioner Kokoski was at the meeting, noon on a Thursday, and we had 50, 60 people in the audience, ready to, willing and able to volunteer to do what was ever needed right then and there, if we wanted to. If we, we've been waiting to start, we were hoping to start this month on painting that floor, on getting things going. But we've been held up because everybody's in limbo on this. And we can continue to draw this out, but this does nobody any good. Now, I've had a chance to, I've known Mr. Kalo for years, Mr. Williams, I met a year and a half ago at the first council meeting he attended for Lorraine City Council, and I introduced him around to who I knew. He was sitting alone in the audience, "Hey, these are," and this and that. And we've had a chance to talk also in the, just in the recent past. The Commissioner came to one of our meetings, and he had some suggestions that were interesting suggestions from two years ago. They would have been, we would have mulled over some suggestions on what to do two years ago. We're past that. We have people that are dedicated to this project. We have a beautiful situation going on here right now. But we're into it. We're ready to go. There are more people that are, there, I cannot believe how many people are excited about doing this. We have roughly 26,000 veterans in this county. And if we call on them, I'll bet you every one of them will come hop, skip, and jump, or bring their walkers, or their canes, and they will want to be there even if it's handing out sandwiches. But the people are excited about this project. We're excited about this project. We have this, we need to loosen this brake. This project, this is half-full, not half-empty. We need to, we need commitment. We made the commitment when we joined the service. We need the commitment from this commission. We need to show a unified force, and let's get it on. Let's do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very well said.
Don Addy, fundraising chairman and finances for the Valor Home, and also fundraising chairman for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. And just to touch bases first on where are we going to get the money? Well, you know, it took over close to nine years to raise the money. But we kept the faith. We kept plugging along, and it was because of the people in the community. One or two little small grants, but everything was done by fundraisers in the support of the community, okay? We ended up raising close to a quarter of a million dollars to build that facility there. And at the time, when that facility was dedicated, I had no idea until Mr. Sam Felton and I were going down the road one day, and I said, "Well, this is it. It's done." He says, "No, Don, it's not done. Something was just born." Well, I never realized, to the emails and all the letters that I got across the country and everything, how many lives is touched, and a sense of closure for our 98 throughout Lorraine County here that sacrificed for our freedom to be able to be here today and their families. And with that being said, I had a couple of other comments. One, change of flags out front.
I told him last week, didn't I? I told you. He got the message.
Okay. Number two, and correct me if I'm wrong, D Block, is it? The front part of St. Joe's?
D Building.
D Building? Okay. I understand that the money's been allocated, it's been released. We need to get moving on that. Why? Because I think if there's some movement out there, that comes off the front of the building, it's going to inspire some people throughout the county, and not only that, but some tenants, to see that something's moving and coming along, okay? Because that will draw the people. They see something going on.
Don, that's in the city's hands. I think it's, they're drawing up the specs for it's out for bid.
Okay. Well, because I'm definite that that will change a lot of things there. Because we got what we call watchers and waiters. We had them the whole time we were at the memorial, when we were starting that. Because they've heard this, when is it going to be done? When's it going to start? When's this going to happen? And you've got watchers and waiters. These are people waiting to see what's going to happen. And they won't wait too long, and they'll be gone, okay? So that, I think, will help a lot of movement there. And like was mentioned earlier, and it's been mentioned many times, if we get that Vet Service Commission's office over there, maybe our recruiters, maybe some other government entities in the building and out there, we can all come together. Because like...
Don, can I address that, though? Because I brought this up with everybody when we were at the St. Joe's meeting, we all did. And I want to say this. What's our goal here? Keep the...
Dive, dive, dive.
Keep the center open or move Veteran Service Commission? Which is the one that we need to do?
Correct.
What's first? Can't do both. It's impossible.
We can do both, but one's got to come ahead of the other.
Thank you. Currently under this proposal is three years that the county would have to come up with $175,000 in total. That would then put any prospective move down the road past this being paid off. There's not enough money to do both.
Right.
Okay?
I was thinking, though, I don't want to change the subject or throw another wrench in it, but at least have a substation, like just a sub-office at the center, just to, you know, people that are at the center, to help them fill out their forms to get their benefits. But not the whole entire office, Veteran Service Offices at St. Joe's, but they should have a presence there.
Right.
In the interim.
Well, we, like you said, we have to delegate things and take them in order. First, you've got to sustain, just like you build a building, you've got to have a foundation.
Right.
Well, we've got to sustain St. Joe's here and quit dragging our feet here and everybody bucking heads. With all this intelligence in this room and throughout this county here, we've got to come together collectively and come up with a solution. I mean, I didn't do it solely, but over the years, we raised a quarter of a million dollars. And the other thing is, well, you know what? I think I did cover it all. The only thing I can say is, let's get busy, and time is of the essence here. We've got to move. Because not everybody's going to wait. The city can't sustain the bills. We can't move forward with nothing. And it's a sad case, too, that not only that all these vets were coming home, we're not just doing this for us that's here now. We're trying to think ahead and thinking of people and our veterans that are coming home today. They're going to be taken care of. They ain't got to jump through the hoops now. We've been jumping through hoops for 40 years. But don't get us wrong, we ain't going to stop jumping, and we ain't going to stop fighting, and we ain't going to stop pushing. So I think it's in everybody's best interest that we try to work together and get this done. And with that being said, have a good day.
You said about keeping the faith, and I had a dream, it was a couple of months ago, but I was in a hospital bed on the top of a hospital, in the bed, though. And all of a sudden, my bed just rolled from one end of the room to the other end of the room while I was in it. And I just kind of got the image in my mind that it was St. Joe's, and like, it was an earthquake is what had caused my bed to shift. And this is like a shift in what's going on with St. Joe's, and God's hand is on it. So when you said, "Keep the faith," I'm keeping the faith, and I believe this is going to happen one way or another. It's not just us, but He's going to help us do that, so.
Exactly. We just need to kick it into high gear. And the comments that have been made out there, and I'm sure these people can tell you, with their knowledge and everything and that, well, we got this wrong, we got that wrong, we got this, we got a whole list of things. You know what? All those things are fixable. But if anybody knows anything about construction, anytime any kind of building like that is built, a hospital especially, everything is number one, correct? They don't cut no corners on nothing. Their outlets cost $3 and $4 apiece. They don't slack on nothing. So being sound and viable, it definitely is. That building just needs a few things done to it, okay? And what the things need to be done are all fixable.
Right.
I think one of the turning points of that building, Don, is when Health and Dentistry moves out of their new facility, that piece of property is so attractive that that's going to make a big difference in the overall health of the facility. I really think that's a key part.
Right, because the amount of rent that they're getting is going to practically triple from what they're paying right now, so that's going to help.
And we're under a timeline here, too. I mean, we're sitting here holding the check to pass the check to them from Valor Home, and everything just come to a screeching halt. We've got to get rid of this negativity, and we've got to get rid of this wave of fear that was sent out through the county. I was getting anywhere from 10 to 15 calls every other day on my phone. And when that hit the papers, it stopped. I get one or two calls a week. It just stopped. Everybody's sitting waiting. Thank you.
Is our new judge going to speak to us? Here come the judge. Here come the judge.
Good afternoon. Lisa Swinski, 4331 Hickory Hill Avenue, Lorraine, Ohio, 44052. Speaking as a private citizen. I was born in St. Joe's Hospital, just to give you my bona fides for people who haven't been at the meetings before. Born at St. Joe's, I use the VA there. I'm a veteran, service-connected, disabled. But it seems like Groundhog Day. This is my fourth meeting. The same thing happens over and over and over again, whether we're at the VA where we were last time, or whether we're here, or whether Mr. Williams drops by. He has questions. He asks the questions. He doesn't seem to get the answers that he needs or wants, or there's a problem. Now it's gone through the boards, so now you guys can meet with him and get him his answers. Then some people beat up on him for asking the questions, which I disagree with. And again, I'm a veteran, but being part of a veteran is that we fight so that we can have a difference of opinion, and I definitely have a bit of a difference of opinion. I don't think you're trying to sabotage by asking questions, Mr. Williams, but I just want you to get your answers so we can get going. I'm a supporter of the Valor Home. I want to see that thing done. I want to see that building kept open. I live in the city of Lorraine. It's, I don't want to see it boarded up, but please get together and get your answers. And let's move.
Thank you.
So, the alternative, Mr. Williams, again, is a question about that village. And if we let a court decide that question, I can assure you that it is going to cost this county a lot more than $300,000. I've researched it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Joel Ardone, 607 Allison Avenue. I'm here as president of Lorraine City Council, just to let you know, the Commissioners here, that Monday after the presentation, which was held during our Finance and Claims Committee, the consensus was that we're 100% behind it. Believe it or not, Mr. Williams, two years ago, when this was brought before, Lorraine City Council on the floor, there were members who spokeingly criticized the mayor and for his dream. Comments were made, and once again, just like here, tapes are kept about a white elephant, about dreaming, this will never happen. Well, I just remember a long time ago, physics class statement was made, "If it's not absurd, if the idea is not absurd at the beginning, then there's really no chance for success." And that came from Albert Einstein. So, once again, a lot of people here, over the past two years, have, let's say, seen the light. Like I said, this is last council meeting, two of the biggest, how would you say it, opponents to this project publicly stated that now they've seen the presentation, they can see the light at the end of the tunnel, and that, you know, they're all for it. I commended the mayor about a month ago. He spoke to me, and he said he was going to talk to the governor or Department of Development also, because it doesn't make any sense for us, the Commissioners, and Lorraine City Council Administration, to make plans when the gold is being held by the state. And it's the old golden rule, whoever has the gold makes the rules. So once again, I told him, I thought personally that was a good strategy to employ, the meeting that was held here, and I would like to concur that I think that the results are going to be favorable to us. They already have in the past with the forgiving of the loans, et cetera. But any road that is not with obstacles usually doesn't lead anywhere. We've been fighting for this a long time. Mr. Cortez has been fighting even longer than us when he was there. But I give him credit for what he said today, was that now we do have more cooperation than there was in the past. So with that cooperation, I'm sure we can find a success. But once again, if you do have questions, just like City Council, we are stewards of the money of the city, so we do have to look out for the best interest. But once again, if everything was guaranteed, what would life be about? You know, I think it'd be pretty boring. Thank you.
Chase Rittenhour, 2515 Garfield Boulevard. I'll be brief after the many comments. You know, we can quibble about how we've gotten here and where we're at today, but we're in reality today. And the notion, I guess, that I think should be certainly specified is that it's not as if the city is here asking for money for the city. It's not as if we're here begging for the county's support. We're in this together. That needs to be, we are in this project together, whether it succeeds, whether it doesn't succeed, we're tied into this. This isn't as if, oh, the county's giving the city of Lorraine money. We're in this one together. And I would also ask you to consider, you know, the fact that, yes, St. Joe's is in Lorraine, and it's one of our major corridors into the city. And if this doesn't succeed, what that does is that sends a message. It's a symbol to people coming into the city of Lorraine, of a vacant building, a boarded-up building, so many of those things that are going well right now with Republic Steel, with the high-tension wires, or so many of these other projects that are moving forward to be more supportive of development and long-term sustainability, that hinders that ability. And, yeah, it's the city of Lorraine, but you three are county Commissioners of the entire county, and that, it's not good for Lorraine, and it's not good for the Commissioners, because it's a bad, bad message when the largest city in the county is struggling. And if the regression continues, we're trying to stabilize it and move it forward to progression. If the regression is able to continue on, it's going to mean a bad, bad thing for the entire county. So I think it needs to be looked at globally in that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a question. Your team's one of the...
Your teams wanted to put this presentation together, right, working with ORA and then South Shore?
Right.
If this is going to become profitable in three years, what would the likelihood be for the city to guarantee repayment of the county funds? Because you, the city of Lorraine is gonna benefit, and I do want the city to benefit. But I would like to see the county taxpayers get reimbursed for this. Would you be willing to sit with city council and come up with a plan to reimburse us for the $450,000?
I'd be willing to look, from a financial standpoint, more favorably on a plan with respect to any additional income tax dollars. But to repay what I feel is the county's obligation that it has, along with the city, on this loan, I think to be partners in this together, the county and the city have to pony up, as does the state, and that's what we're asking them in this proposal.
Again, as you know, this isn't our debt. We're the previous boards guaranteed this in administration.
I'm in the same position that you're in.
Same position, and I understand your pain. But I'm just looking at a way, you know, if we can work with South Shore in order to get them to repay it. And, again, how strongly are you committed to that in 2015, that you're gonna show a profit?
I mean, that's why the pro forma, you know, it was important that it be conservative pro forma.
Twenty-two thousand, that's very, you're on very tight, um, as far as profit margin. Twenty-three thousand, I think that's what, just above one and a half percent.
The importance of it, right, it's a tight pro forma, and the importance of the plan is that it's a hybrid. You know, the plan, the plan not only looks at the operations, it looks at the end line. It needed to be a hybrid plan so that by 2014, based on the pro forma, you know, wherever we are at, there is an end line. And I think that's important. And that's something that I look at in my role as mayor and steward of the taxpayers' dollars, inheriting this project and taking it forward, that is something that is a guarantee for the taxpayers, that there is an end line in sight. Thanks.
Certainly, Commissioner, we could possibly take a look at that. But you have to understand that this is gonna be a long-term investment by both of us. The city's funding will come from some revolving loan funds. We are gonna do them as loans. They're gonna be extremely low-interest rate loans. And like the state has recently amended the loan documents, once it becomes profitable, we will request payment. It'll only be a small percentage of the profits. Where we're hoping to eventually get that money back is when a portion of these units sell. So certainly, if it is the county's wishes to structure this as debt and place a mortgage on there, we would certainly be willing to entertain it, because I will probably be requesting that, that we do that from the city's perspective, so we can try and protect the money that the city is gonna be putting in here. But do realize, unless we get some good sales, the return on investment on this is gonna be far into the future. But certainly, we can look at that.
This doesn't have to be just an intent of support today to go forward and talk to the state. Everything on the backside will have to be negotiated amongst the entities.
That's correct.
On paybacks and commitments, but getting the project to the state and the border control is the intent.
Anybody else?
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand here a little bit. I don't understand that question, asking the city of Lorraine to repay something that all three of us are in together, meaning the county, state, and the city.
The debt is all...
So any kind of situation, if the county helps out another area throughout the county and that, then you're asking for repayment because the county had given up money to help that situation in that particular city or township, whatever? You're on this note, just like they are. So how could you turn around and ask them to repay you, the county, back on something that you belong on the same piece of paper?
This, we're on the note, the debt belongs to South Shore. The debt belongs to South Shore on that. And what I'm asking for is if the county taxpayers are going to invest, that we are gonna get back the money. Because if this project was successful, if Lorraine, previous administrations did the right thing fifteen years ago, we wouldn't be in this issue. So what I'm asking is, we're taking a risk on this. Go through, if I can, if we come up and agree to the $450,000, that the county taxpayers are gonna be paid back because the debt doesn't belong to the county, we were just a note, a signature on the note. That's all I'm asking for.
Which is responsible, Don, let me, which is responsible, because the city is doing the same process, through revolving loan process. That's a responsible way of doing it. He's not, and those discussions were had between myself and the mayor and Doug, but not shared across the board yet, because we haven't gotten anywhere yet. Those were just discussion points. So currently, what I think our intent today, and we've all talked, and we've all been supporters of this place, I mean, we've, we're, you know, up to our necks in South Shore on this side. Mr. Williams is new to the board and wasn't here two, two and a half years ago, or Mr. Cordez, ten years ago, doing it, or us, seven or eight years ago. Currently, with everything presented, a majority of the board is showing intent to support the proposal that is down at the state, waiting to hear back from them. Mr. Williams is waiting for some more answers, some questions he has. That's all we need to get done today, correct? Is that the point? So the more that we talk about, no offense, the less that they can communicate with the state that the board of commissioners is on board with this proposal. Please look at it seriously. And that's where I think we need to get today. Agreed, Mayor? Council President?
Yes.
And if you could answer Mr. Williams' questions as quickly as possible, because when we do actually present this to the state, which, you're gonna try to do that when?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible? They have it? Well, I'd like, I would like for it to be a unanimous board. I think it shows, you know, better for everyone involved. So if you can get those answers to him as quickly as possible. So it was a three to zero instead of a two to one, it would be great.
Exactly, because certainly...
I know, I'm just saying, I would like it to be a unanimous board.
Right. You certainly don't want the state down there seeing that we can't even figure out things or work together.
Right. Because that's why they were impressed, because there were so many people working together at that table that day, and that's, they were impressed by that. So I would like to, them to go, walk away knowing that everybody is in favor.
And this is just our first big hurdle here, because we got a big hurdle on our millage coming for the veterans.
Where are we at here?
Mr. Cordez.
Do you have any other comments, Mr. Cordez? Hi.
It's been a rather long morning. I'd just like to point out, at my time out there at Saint Joe's, I fought very hard to not only get but expand that VA clinic. And we fought quite a few wars out there, and I know everybody's gone, so I'm not saying it for any effect to anybody that's sitting here. But the, we put a lot of effort into getting that VA clinic here, and sometimes we don't get enough credit for it. Other than that, I don't have any additional comments this morning.
Sir, did you have a question for the board?
No.
No? Okay.
Mr. Innes, this is Kaskowski.
Commissioners, last week, we passed a resolution regarding making the fiscal, the auditor fiscal agent for the TB clinic, and we had some questions about it. Since then, the auditor has contacted me, and I think he's contacted the board directly. Apparently, I misinterpreted what he was requesting in his letter, and he's now asking that that motion be rescinded, and I would join in requesting the commissioners to rescind Resolution 12-232 passed last week.
I got a question on that. Since it didn't matter whether we passed it, does it matter whether we on-pass it?
Probably not.
So he didn't want that?
No.
No, I...
What was the change of heart, or was it just...
Well, I, I still think it says what it says, but I misunderstood what he was writing in his letter. He just, he just really asked that, uh... There needs to be some clarification here, now that the clinic's closing and we're re-designating, which we will do when the contract, signed contract gets in, we will have to re-designate Mercy as the tuberculosis control unit. And with all these different terminologies going on, I think the auditor didn't quite understand what was happening and where we were in the process, but I needed to explain to him that we are gonna have to do some follow-up resolutions when that contract is finally signed, but we don't do it right now.
So I'll make a motion to rescind, I don't know what the number was, the resolution for Mark Stewart to be the, what was he?
Fiscal agent.
Fiscal agent?
I'll suck. I'm sorry, I'm laughing from last week, too.
Anything further, Kaskowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have nothing else for the board.
I have no report.
Well, last week, Jim, Pat Medsger, and myself met with Dan Tellerick. I hope to have something the next couple days to give to the board in regards to the land bank. Actually, meeting with Mayor Brenda and Mayor Rittenhour and the treasurer on Monday, just some input they said they'd like to give into a county-wide land bank. So I hope we have some information. Pat's on vacation this week. Hopefully, next Wednesday, we'll present for an outline and some articles of incorporation. My intent...
I'll be talking to all of you prior to that, but I would hope to have the item agenda next Wednesday to start the process.
Wonderful. Also, in discussions with Mr. Tellerick at our upcoming Investment Advisory Committee meeting, we're gonna have to make the request to have the treasurer do the bonds on the highway notes. We'll have to do that from the floor and get approval, but all the rules are in place, and also be able to do that for a long-term note and gain the county 4% interest income on it. Also, Mr. Cordez, it's kinda funny, and you'll kinda enjoy this, Tom, this is for you, too. Got a phone call Monday morning about my opponent's website. He had a blog up about doing things with our buses, and I know we talked about three or four weeks ago, the games, the casino, and all that stuff, but I saw it was an idea on Mr. Van Schulden's website, so. Do you have anything on those numbers we talked about two, three, four, or five weeks ago?
What numbers would that be?
As to what kind of cost it would be, what it might generate, any proposal, lay down how we do it, permissions to do it? I know we all talked about this four or five weeks ago, and you said you were working on things.
You're talking about the transit?
Yeah, the bus thing into Cleveland and Cedar Point we talked about. And the parking issues out there.
In fact, later today, when I speak with you guys, I have some cost data that I'm gonna share with you with regard to those services. And I've spoken to all three of you over the last couple weeks individually with regard to the potential...
I thought maybe you were calling Phil, too.
Well, I know Phil, he's a nice enough guy, and I like that he's running against you, but, you know, it's, it's, the, but, no, I didn't call him and speak to him, but I have spoken to each one of you with respect to the potential ability to provide transit shuttles down to Public Square, which would actually be more commonly for casino shuttles, but I wanna say Public Square because it'd be open transportation. And also, something I've wanted to do for a couple years, and we, for various reasons, haven't accomplished, I'd like to see some game day shuttles, to see if we can't generate business off the park rides going down.
We talked about Cedar Point, too, but that wouldn't work because why? I forget.
The Cedar Point problem I had was a couple things. A was the timeframes involved. Most kids or young adults that go to Cedar Point that don't have transportation don't leave till very late at night. And so that became a big issue and running that shuttle. And the second thing was getting the buses actually onto the property at Cedar Point. There was, there was a lot of resistance. They do like to charter buses on, and they park over in the silots, but actually doing the pickup and drop-off on a continued basis presented some challenges that, because of the late times, that it may have been necessary to run the shuttle to be profitable, we just left LA on the side. But the games are a little bit different. We can predict those with a little bit more accuracy.
Well, actually, that was coming handy, because my family went to the opening day, and the RTA Westlake Park and Ride only runs in the AM till 8:37, and then in the evening, getting back. I had to go to 117th for them to catch the RTA. My assistant suggested 117th, actually, is the one to go to, because they don't run that, because there's not enough traffic coming out of Lorraine County to run that all day.
I've taken the 117th and then taken the train downtown to Tower City. That makes it quite long, and it's quite a long walk from...
Well, it was 12 minutes from 717th Street to Tower City, and then they had to walk over to the stadium, of course.
Right, it's quite, it's quite a walk. The, where I think that if we ran transit routes to the game, we could do a drop-off much closer to the facility. Although they have to watch the traffic patterns, obviously, the closer you get to game time. And there's some potential. In fact, if we ran shuttles on game day, we may end up dropping off somewhere closer to Tower City to stay out of the big traffic snalls that occur right around the stadium. But I do have some numbers to present to you. It's something that I've been talking to you guys about, and because before we started doing that investigation, I didn't wanna waste time getting numbers and asking people to get times, because those routes have to be timed and so forth, unless there was, you know, good consensus on the board that they were interested in at least experimenting with that. Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the question is, how dedicated were you, did you say, for all 15 innings?
Well, I didn't go to the game.
Oh, I thought you said...
No, I took my family down there.
Your family, okay.
And I went and picked them up that evening.
All right.
Responsible dad.
I enjoyed it at home with the hot dogs I bought at Aldi's, so. Saved a lot of money.
I forgot to mention that we all have blue on in our badges to support Child Abuse Awareness Month for this April, and today is the actual, today's the actual kickoff date, so that's why we're all wearing blue, and we all have our badges on, our buttons on, so.
Is that the end of your report, or do you have more?
No, no, I was done.
Oh, okay. I think you've probably seen at the Nawaka meeting, or not Nawaka, the, just lost it. CCAO Metropolitan Regional.
They canceled off the phone call, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you got that. I met with Congressman Jordan yesterday and had a great conversation with him. Actually, started talking with him regarding a federal project that could bring some things to the airport. I won't go into the details, but there's only six locations throughout the US, trying to get one here in Lorraine County because of what we have to offer, especially with the college, with the new Smart Center coming in, and the technology that the government wants to use. What we're trying to figure out is, is this truly up for grabs, or are they just going through the exercise and the locations have already been selected?
You're learning.
So, hate to waste time. We have Nawaka this Friday. I'll be attending that. And something that came up, I'm not sure if you guys got the invitation, but LCC, their government class is always looking for students to interview elected officials. I had one, Taylor Cannon, that came in today to spoke...
You took care of Taylor, 'cause I got lost in the spam. I was gonna send him back an email this afternoon, got stuck in Tony's spam, and I got it yesterday afternoon. You took care of Taylor?
Yeah, I took care of Taylor, and that...
That's Professor Patterson's student.
We did that one, too? Okay. Yeah, we did that one, too.
All right, just wanted to make sure that you were getting those invitations, so. That's the end of my report.
Two o'clock today is going to be our records commission, so...
You gotta hurry.
And Jerry's involved in that, and I'm going for Lori, so.
Well, you know, I have a short executive session, but I got stuff to talk to you guys about, so...
Well, Jerry can come in and do his thing first.
I think he's done, right? You already told us.
You didn't have anything?
Okay.
By the time you guys break...
Only Teresa's going.
Oh, she's the only one going to the records commission?
Yeah, she's going for me and Jerry.
Yeah, I'm going for Lori, I just wanted to let that...
Oh, okay, so maybe the board members were going, okay.
No.
So it's just when we come out of the executive session.
I mean, I should be done, just call me.
Well, Ted could close the meeting, he's been doing, he's good at doing that.
Well, Lori's gonna be here. Are you, you're not going, are you going to records commission?
No.
No, okay, you send her as your alternate. All right, I won't be there.
We're just closing the meeting, if she's in there, you...
Oh, yeah, I can close the meeting.
Well, we'll just come out of exec as quick as possible.
Yeah.
What do you think about that comment, Teresa? Do you think he will?
No.
Would I take the fifth, or plead the fifth, or whatever that is? For correspondence?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion, Kaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Public comment?
Didn't you have your 15 minutes of fame already?
I didn't even have three minutes, and you let some other people go even longer than that, and that was to a particular issue. David Ashenhurst Oberlin, yeah, I actually wanted to just say something in respect to what Mr. Cordez said, now that everybody's left, and I wouldn't be afraid to say this, even if they were all still here as well, and my son will be a veteran, or he will be a casualty, so I hope he's a veteran. He is in the service right now. But I hope we continue to talk about two centers of synergy in this county for veteran services and not one, and I really, I understand why the Veterans Services Office is over by Job and Family Services and those offices, and not the same place as the Medical Center. The one-stop-shop idea is properly met, it seems to me, for all veterans over at the, at Job and Family Services, so I hope whatever issues there are there about what's confidential, I mean, everybody else is there with confidential matters as well, and so it'd be nice if people had some semblance of privacy in those places, whether they're applying for welfare, or, you know, getting job counseling, or anything else, but, so I, I support the idea of veterans staying over there, as much as the veterans who are here, it sounds to me, would really like it to move over to the community center. And I still don't understand why Social Security didn't move into that building, because the parking's there, it just...
When we filled out, and I can tell you, more than likely, it was the same story, when we used to fill out the RFP for GSA, we couldn't meet all the requirements that GSA wanted for certain stipulations, and that's what made the fight for the VA clinic so difficult.
Yeah, Senator Brown's office is there, and he said eight years with Senator Brown, he hasn't been senator eight years.
But it depends on what area the building were going in, and the amount of renovation that was going to be done in that area, and whether it met, I mean, they got stipulations on the height of the ceiling, the type of ceiling tile, again, it was...
The hospital is going to meet that better than almost anything else.
Not really, the St. Joe's building, parts of it are fairly old, and it's gerrymandered, and you may go in one section, and we may be able to meet the requirements in one section, then without major renovation down another section, we may not have been able to meet the requirements of the RFP.
I understand, I have sympathy for you on both counts of that, but I, as I say, I hope it doesn't get away from us that Veterans Services has good reasons for being where it is.
Yeah, it's interesting that you bring it up yesterday. I had another meeting in the morning, and I came across a veteran, and somebody I knew was talking to him, he actually did like the location of having the veterans with the Job and Family Services, because they were able to direct them over to, in order to find a job. So when he was out of, you know, unemployment, they redirected them, so. Okay, one thing I forgot to mention, I think we have this on the agenda, is the state auditor is coming in next week for 11:00 AM presentation?
Correct.
Correct. So just another reminder, and...
I mean, we also have two hearings that day, too, 15:13, so...
And a fun event.
Yes, of Sherry Hill on Tuesday at 9:30 in the morning.
9:30 in the morning?
What day is that? Tuesday.
Seventeenth.
The 17th, but the 18th is all those hearings we have, presentations.
Tough Mudders competition, so if you want to go...
Going with the mayor? The mayor's going, too.
I don't know what he's...
Tough Mudders will be starting, so...
As long as you don't interfere with the Bruce Springsteen concert that I'm going to, we're just fine.
I'm saying that's where he's going to next week.
That's where I'm going to.
Can't understand what he sings, so.
You really can't get wrapped, can you?
We can go ahead and approve...
I listen to talk radio.
My kids call me AM Ted.
I thought he was a gin and juice guy.
Yeah, there you go, gin and juice. Anything else?
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and approve these transfers appropriations and...
Okay, so appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Was there VA assistance repayment?
No, there's not.
I think so, okay.
Okay. Motion...
Fred, you had nothing? You just came up to see us? No?
Okay, a motion to go into executive session, it's outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us.